Show on the road. Diana, we ready?
Not too much.
Township and Squad's zoning board of adjustment for November 9th, 2022 is now in session. This meeting has been published by the, according to the Open Public Meeting Act, there's an agenda in the town, there's an agenda in the newspaper, and there is an agenda and notice in the website. It's our, it's our normal routine to salute the flag to start. Anybody who wishes to join us can do so.
Let's put the flag in the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Diana, would you call the roll, please?
Here. Here.
Mr. Silvestre?
Here.
Mr. Joseph?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
Here. We have minutes from May 11th?
I make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
We didn't get them, did we?
It was like those Hudson County voters.
Oh, okay. I thought maybe it was just a missing from my pack. Okay. We'll let those go.
It's my people.
We have some resolutions. Reverend George Brown School, 19-22.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to memorialize Reverend George Brown School application, 19-22, decided on October 12th, for reaffirming conditional use approval and site plan approval.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Diane, call the roll, please.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. LaRupa?
Yes.
The Pinkelby?
Yes.
Yes. And we have a resolution for Jonathan Zabak.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion to memorialize Jonathan Zabak application, 20-22, decided on October 12th, 2022, for C. variance relief.
Diana, call the roll, please.
Mr. Pinkelby?
Yes.
Mr. LaRupa?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. First on the agenda is the 711, 6-19. Is there anybody here from that? Okay, sir, would you please, are you an attorney?
Yes.
Okay, would you just go on the record, please, for me?
Dan Kline, K-L-I-N-E, prime and two bell, on behalf of the applicant, 711.
Go ahead.
We're here to respectfully request another adjournment of the previously approved site plan. We've experienced some construction delays due to uncertainties over COVID. However, we do come to give the board reassurance that we are moving forward. Since sending our letter, we have secured DEP and DOT approvals. So this request is mostly out of an abundance of caution, but we do make the request anyway as we would anticipate filing for our building permits well before the, if approved, extension period would be over in perhaps six to eight months from now.
Yeah, how much time are you asking for, sir?
Just the statutory one year.
One year. Mr. Simmons, do you have any comments to make?
No, Mr. Chairman, I have not seen the permits that the applicant's representative just alluded to. I assume that'll be coming when they put their whole package together and we'll check it, but I don't have any objection to the board considering an extension.
Okay. Mr. Keens?
Nothing at all, sir.
Okay. Does any board member have anything to say with this extension? Does anybody in the audience have anything to say with this extension? Okay, we'll close it to the people outside, and we'll come back to the board, and the chair will accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion for the 711 application, 619, block 2016, lot 1, for substantial preliminary major site plan approval with the conditional use variance and design waiver relief.
I second.
Any discussion? Diana, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yeah.
Mr. Silvestre?
Yes.
Mr. LaRupa?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkelby?
Yes.
Yes. You have a one-year extension, sir. Good luck.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Next on the list is Perona Realty Corporation, 21-22. Is there anybody here from that?
Hey, Dan, would you send in the Perona crew? There's a whole group out there, Perona. They're probably munching on food or something.
You said they're outside?
Yeah.
All right, let's give them another minute.
Want me to go catch them? What are these? I didn't realize how.
Is there anybody here from? You're up, sir.
My name's Robert McBreyer. I'm with the law firm, Escape Price &amp; Smith &amp; King, and I represent the applicant, Perona Realty Corporation, in tonight's application. With us this evening are Mark Avandolio, the president, Bryant Avandolio, general manager, and Ken Dykstra, to my right, the professional retained as planner and engineer on this matter.
Would you bring up all your witnesses, and we'll swear them in. Mark, you can stand right next to that microphone right behind you there. Just speak into the microphone, please. Okay. Does your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in respect to this matter?
I do.
You start with yourself, sir. There's a mic right on the floor. Just give your name and address and your association with this to the secretary, please.
Yep, Kenneth Dykstra, D-Y-K-S-T-R-A, I'm the, or the Dykstra Walker Design Group, Jefferson Township. And if it may please the board, Mr. Dykstra is qualified as a professional engineer and planner. He's appeared before this board any number of times. If it please this board, if it would stipulate to his credentials as a professional in the areas of planning and engineering.
Mr. Dykstra, is your license still valid?
Yes, they are.
Thank you. You have been in front of this board before. Thank you. Sir, just spell your, give your name and your associations with this application and spell your last name, please.
Sure, my name is Bryant Avandolio, A-V as in Victor, O-N-D-O-G-L-I-O. I'm the general manager of Perona Farms, that's 350 Andover Sparta Road, Andover.
Thank you, sir.
Mark Avandolio, same last name spelling, 349 Andover Sparta Road, Andover, New Jersey. I'm the president, Perona Farms.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, you can stand there, or you can get some seats and pull yourself up here, but what I'm going to ask you when you do speak, please speak into the microphones. The gentleman sitting over here have a microphone in front of him, but you can pull this microphone over to you at all times. Counselor, you can start anytime you wish, sir.
Thank you, sir. Can I be seated?
Yes. Please be comfortable.
Mr. Chairman, just before we get started, is there any counsel here on behalf of anybody else in the audience? No, not you. Her. Please identify yourself for the record.
Elizabeth Durkin, D-U-R-K-I-N, from the Durkin Firm, on behalf of property owners, Mr. and Mrs. Mara.
Could you move over by the microphone, please, Mr. Durkin?
Do you like me to give my appearance again?
Yes, just so we'd be picked up on the tapes. Thank you.
Certainly. Elizabeth Durkin, D-U-R-K-I-N, from the Durkin Firm, on behalf of adjoining property owners, Mr. and Mrs. Mara, 26 Carriage House Road, Sparta.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Parker, I realize that we haven't had a live one with other people here and of other interests. Counselor, you don't have any problem with completeness, notice, or anything else? I don't want to get into any procedural stuff after we start the hearing.
I don't, assuming the board has already accepted jurisdiction.
Board has already accepted jurisdiction. It's here, it's all teed up. We have a whole process here that doesn't.
On behalf of my clients, we are not disputing any jurisdictional issue at all.
Okay, thank you very much, Liz.
Okay.
Okay, just for everybody's information, how we're going to proceed, we're going to let the applicant put forth his, his application in total, and our professionals are going to give them, give us their opinion. Board members will kick in, and then we'll open it up to the public, and that's basically how we're going to work this. Mr. McBreyer, it's in your court, sir.
By way of brief summary, this applicant seeks amended site plan approval and formal variance relief to construct, renovate, and maintain an outdoor patio and gathering area. The designated area will consist of a new roof structure and covered roof pavilion, including a kitchen area, outdoor bar and food serving area, and loading dock as part of the existing barn building. These improvements will be used for applicant's existing catering, event, and banquet business. It is critical to note and appreciate that no additional occupancy is proposed, as the outdoor gathering area will be utilized as a non-contributing area for interior guests. In other words, the proposed expansion will not increase the total number of seats for this improvement. In 2013, the applicant previously obtained site plan waiver approvals to construct the 3,000-square-foot paver patio area included in the plans. And in 2021, the applicant obtained site plan waiver approvals for the construction of the new roof over the outdoor gathering area. According to Section 2D of the engineer's report, a use variance is required to use the designated area as part of the existing permitted catering banquet and event facility in the RR Rural Residential Zone. The applicant respectfully requests that the board reaffirm the use permitted on the property and to grant the use variance requested for this particular project.
Sir, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned this before, but if you're using a D. variance, we have six members sitting tonight. Do you want to continue with six members?
They can do that tonight. They can proceed, but it's up to you if you want. We're ready to proceed.
You're ready to proceed with six?
That's correct.
Okay, we'll put that in the record. Thank you. Continue.
It should be noted that there are existing non-conforming conditions for rear yard setback and maximum impervious coverage. However, no changes are proposed to them. The applicant requests approval of these conditions in the form of bulk variance relief. Finally, Mr. Dykstra prepared an amended site plan, which he will review in a moment. We ask that the site plan, as amended, be approved by the board and that the requested checklist waivers be granted. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Ken Dykstra to review the site plan amendment.
Mr. Dykstra, you can either pull that microphone over or get down with that one. You, tall guy like you, it's going to be awkward for you. You may want to use that mic.
All right, let me, I'll go over to this one.
Okay. Or you can take that over to you. It'll move around.
All right, how's that?
Okay, as long as we can pick it up. Are you going, is this the same as we have, except that you've made notations on it?
Yes, this is the, the plan that was submitted, titled Asbilt Site Plan, with a date of last revised September 1st, 2022.
Okay, I think we should mark that A1, then, and that has to be turned in at the end of the meeting.
Ken, just a few questions before we begin. Did you visit the subject property in connection with the preparation and completion of your amended site plan?
Yes, I did, on multiple occasions.
And when you prepared your site plan, did you take into account the applicable township ordinances and master plan?
Yes.
And can you please describe the amended site plan that you prepared?
Yeah, the amended site plan effectively is an Asbilt survey of the existing condition. The, the barn property, we call it the barn, this is part of the Perona Farms restaurant facility. The barn property is a 5.2-acre parcel located on the east side of Perona Road, while the majority of the Perona Farms facilities are located on the west side of Perona Road in Andover Township. The barn was, was, it's called the barn because it was formerly a, a barn, and it was been renovated into a, basically a banquet hall. The food preparation occurs across in the main restaurant, not, not on this site, so this is really just for events. There's a lower level in the barn and then an upper level, and, and there was an outdoor seating area of about 3,000 square feet behind the building. The only change to this site plan is that that outdoor seating area is now, now covered. So, plans were developed by Charlie Schaefer for the design, and permits were issued, the covered area is already constructed. Includes basically just a covered area where guests can gather, guests that would normally be inside, but they can spend some time outside in good weather conditions. There's an outdoor serving area and an outdoor bar area as part of that addition, I'll call it. Other than that, there are no, no change to the site. The site has basically a paved parking area, there's an existing storage building, and you know, the barn looks like a barn, has two, two exist, actually three existing silos still there. There's no changes to the lighting proposed with this application. This covered area does not change the number of guests that'll attend events here, it's just that in nice weather, they, they may spend some time outside in the covered area. So that's, that's essentially it. The site is 5.2 acres, it's, and it, the municipal boundary line actually splits this lot, so you, a portion of this, this property is actually in Andover Township, in, in their residential zone, it's the R3 zone in Andover Township. And then when you get into the Sparta portion, which is about 3.4 acres, that's in the rural residential zone, which is basically Sparta's five-acre, single-family zone. So, that's the reason we, we need the, need the continuation of that non-conforming use, because this is a single-family zone, and we have a basically catering facility located on the property. But that's been there for many years, and really, we haven't changed anything other than covered, covered that 3,000-square-foot back patio area. Impervious coverage is still the same, it's 22% of the lot is impervious coverage, and you're, because it's a five-acre residential zone, only 10% is allowed, so that's, that condition is a, that's a non-conforming condition that continues. So 22% impervious, existing, and 10% allowed. The other condition that we have is that the, the building setback to the rear property line is 22.4 feet, and, and that's, and the new condition with the covered area is still 22.4 feet, although I will mention that the, there, we have some, the covered area has a couple pretty good overhangs, so if you measure to the overhang, it's about 17 feet to the overhang from the rear property line, or the easterly property line, and that's a, that's known as block 4,006, lot 31, which is a township-owned lot, and on that lot there's a, you know, basically a large detention basin that takes care of stormwater from the, what used to be called the Winterthur subdivisions up above. So that's the, that's the site plan.
Can we, Dr. Parker? Go ahead.
Quick question, Mr. Dykstra. The site plan we received in our package is not just the one you're showing there. The one you're showing shows the parking and the driveway, the site plan we have doesn't show any of that.
Yeah, that's, it should be the, it should be the same plan, last revised September 1st?
No, it'll be August 19.
That's the, if, if you look at the revision block, it's 9122, to the left of the title, left, left part of the title block?
No, yeah, well, the title block has the August 19 states, but I don't have the revision.
On the right is the eight.
91.
Right, right. All right, so that is the same plan. The only, the difference here is I actually shaded in the paved area.
It doesn't show the paved area on the, on the corner.
There's a, there's a, there's a dash line.
Dash line, okay.
Yeah, that dash line is the extent of the paving. That wraps all the way around, and there's a, there's a center island with a utility pole in it, that's not paved.
A lot different color.
Well, it just makes it stand out a little more, yeah.
Yeah.
That's why we put that into the record.
All right, want to make sure we have the right one.
Yeah, no, that is the correct plan.
So the one dated, September 1st is the one that's on record with the application?
That's the plan date that was filed with the board, yes. Plan last revised 9/1/22.
Okay.
And I, you know, regarding this use, I will say that this, this site is really well-suited for this use, because the, with the Perona facility and restaurant on the other side of the street, you have this lot, which is, is basically directly across the street, and, and it's the same type of use, so, and complimentary, so this site is very well-suited for, for the use, and, you know, that's, that's why the, this property was allowed, this var, these variances were previously allowed to allow, for the facility. And again, we're, we're not changing anything other than we covered, they covered the patio area that was already existing.
Can you finish, sir?
Yes.
Mr. McBreyer, you?
Yeah, we'll certainly entertain any questions that the board has, either from our professional or from the fact that this is.
I am going to ask Mr. Simmons, I know he has a report in here, and you haven't exactly covered down a lot of the things he has, so I'd like him to go through and comment on it. Go ahead. Mr. Simmons, I have a question for you, too.
Sure. Referring to the report dated October 10th, 2022, that I prepared on the application, as you just mentioned, Mr. Chairman, the applicant's addressed several of the items that I had in the report, but I'll just highlight a few if I may. One item that I just want to bring up is that when I was reviewing the plan, the subject property on the east side of Perona Farm Road is bisected by the Andover Sparta Township line. When I scaled it off approximately, just for the board's information in the record, in Sparta Township, there's, by scaling, about 3.2 acres and about 1.8 acres of the lot sizes on the Andover Township side. I did touch base with Corey Stoner from our office, he serves as the planning board engineer in Andover Township. I ran this plan by him, and I explained to him that the proposed improvements were basically all contained on the Sparta Township side of the line. He had no problem with relinquishing jurisdiction from an engineering standpoint and review over to Sparta Township in the report that I did. Mr. Keens may want to comment a little further on that, but I think that's basically how we were probably talking about handling it.
Yeah, I had also talked with the board attorney in Andover, who's in agreement with Dave and Corey's position, too. He also happens to be in my corner.
The next thing I just wanted to touch about, we touched about the use variance. With regards to the site plan, on the sheet two of the plans that Mr. Dykstra submitted, the one question that I had, based on my site inspection on the site, on the rear of the property where it shows on the plan 22.4 feet to the rear property line, based on some other documentation that was provided after this report was written, it appears that the paved area may extend slightly onto existing lot 31, block 4,006, owned by Sparta Township, and I was wondering if Mr. Dykstra could comment on that, if he agrees with that.
That's correct. The, there is a extension of some of the pavement that's been there for many years that does go onto the Sparta lot, I think as much as maybe 17 feet at one point, and there's a, and there's also a, actually a wood shed on there also, I'll point that out, where they store wood for the, the fire pit, so that's on Sparta's property also.
So the one thing on that, if the board would act favorably on the application, one suggestion I have is that Sparta Township be contacted to work out either a license, a easement, or some agreement that would necessarily be acceptable with all parties in order to cover that particular situation, because the applicant is going over onto the adjoining property.
And that would be acceptable to the applicant. We'll get the input from Mr. Keens, Mr. Simmons, Mr. Dykstra, and myself, and propose such a license that would be satisfactory to the board after its review and consideration.
Then with regards to storm drainage, again, as Mr. Dykstra pointed out, we've got a combination of building and paved surfaces, so while there's some change between building and paved surfaces percentage, basically as far as impervious area goes and stormwater runoff, there's going to be essentially no net change, so that isn't an issue, and the lighting is proposed to remain the same as it is right now, based on Mr. Dykstra's comments. With regards to the architectural plans that Mr. Schaefer's office put together, the only question I had, just to make sure everyone's on the same page, my understanding is there's no plans to fully enclose that outside area, and I just ask for that to be confirmed.
That'll be a condition anyway.
That, that is correct. There are no, there are no plans to enclose those areas of the building.
Okay. With regards to landscaping, there's none proposed, but this particular part of the facility is in the rear, and there is other landscaping in the overall complex of Perona Farm Road, so I just point that out. With regards to utilities, I did receive today an email from Mr. McBreyer's office, and basically it had some mapping and some correspondence from the county health department dated June 16th, 2022, with regards to Christine Whitehead, senior registered environmental health specialist, with regards to the fact that while it's an extended patio and floor plan, it's their understanding there's no additional seating proposed, so the septic system as it is is acceptable to the county health department. So we did receive that information from Mr. McBreyer's office. With regards to water, I just wanted to clarify it, just so. With regards to water, I just wanted to clarify it, just so everyone was on the same page. Uh, I noticed that there is an existing well shown on the site, and there's also a waterline shown going to the, towards the area where the existing silo is on the southerly part of the property. And I spoke with Mr. Spalvy, and my understanding from my conversation with him is that the existing well is used for portable domestic use, but the fire line is used for fire protection in the facility. So, that's how that was set up with the Township Water Department. And, again, we talked about the jurisdiction between Andover and Sparta Township. On Item 12, I listed several, uh, divisions of the township and the county where approval would be required. And finally, if the board is to act favorably, I recommend that upon completion of the project, there be an ASBIL plan prepared by Mr. Dykstra's office. And that's my updated report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, as, uh, all right. I just want to get straightened out about the existing disturbed area under the Environmental Impact Statement. Could you just clarify what you mean by that and how that affects the application, if it does?
Okay, I would, I would, that's a good question, and I would ask Mr. Dykstra to comment on that. But basically, if you look at Sheet 2 of, 2 of the site plan, you see on Lot, partly on Lot 31 and then wrapping around, there's a dashed, long dashed and short dashed line that's basically labeled as the limits of the wetlands, and then there's some other lines that represent the transition area associated with those wetlands. Basically, what the applicant is doing is doing some work in areas that have already been disturbed in those transition areas, so it's not like it's a new disturbance in virgin wetlands or virgin transition areas. And perhaps Mr. Dykstra could comment on that further.
Yeah, the, uh, there was a question in the report about the wetlands being delineated, and these were delineated wetlands by Brian Kramer, uh, some time ago, but, uh, we've, uh, taken the limits that were on the, uh, on the previous survey for this project, and, Mike Catalano actually was the surveyor previously, so we had Mike Catalano's information, and he had located all the wetland flags, and they're reflected on the, and the wetland limits are, as delineated by Brian Kramer, who is an environmental, uh, wetland specialist, uh, those wetland limits are shown on this plan. And, uh, the wetland buffers in this area are 150 feet, and, uh, so, you know, effectively almost this entire property is frankly, in the, other than a small sliver, is it within the wetland transition area. But, uh, but it's always been that way. It's been that way since it was a farm, and it's been that way since, uh, it's been operated by, as the barn by, uh, by Perona. So, so those are existing, uh, conditions within transition areas that are, are allowed to continue. So, no additional permitting is required.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons, do you finish?
No, thank you.
Mr. Keens, you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll open it up to the board. Anybody on the board have any questions for this applicant?
I'm good.
Richard, you good? Okay, for the moment, I'm going to close it to the board, and I'm going to open it up to the public. We have, sir, Mr. Dykstra, would you just move that microphone back for, uh, attorney? Thank you. One of these days, we'll get upgraded and we'll have more than one mic, but in the meantime-
Do you have a mic, then?
-we'll pass it around.
Oh, okay. Just a couple of questions, Mr. Dexter. And I'm sorry, I didn't hear in the beginning, I, I know you are the civil engineer and the, and the professional planner on this application, is that correct, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Are you qualified in and have provided the planning testimony, or is that going to be coming later in the application?
No, I'm, I'm qualified as a professional planner and, uh, and a, an engineer.
Okay, so I can ask you planning questions as well? That's the only reason I'm asking you. I didn't know if that was coming later in, in your testimony, that you've already provided that.
He was qualified at the beginning, and we've seen him many times.
Oh, no, I, I'm not, I'm not doubting his qualification, sir. I just didn't know whether or not, based on the testimony that he's provided so far to the board, whether or not he's just testified, given engineering testimony, or whether or not he's also given planning testimony, and then that way I can ask both engineering and planning questions.
You can. He mumbled that beforehand.
Oh, okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. Um, I just have a couple of questions for you initially on the plan itself, uh, Mr. Dykstra. The, my understanding is there already is an existing, what you call the barn, is already a facility that's operated as part of the, uh, Perona Farms Catering Facility, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And there is an outdoor patio that's already existing that's used as part of the catering facilities, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. And then the proposed plan is to exonerate or expand on the exterior, uh, uses for the catering business? Is that correct?
No, it's just covering the, uh, existing outdoor, uh, dining area.
So, so all that's, that's the relief that you're requesting tonight is just to cover what, an existing patio that's there?
That, that's correct.
The kitchen, the outdoor kitchen is already there?
The, uh, it's, it's all, everything, uh, the covered area is existing and, uh, and the outdoor, it's not a kitchen, it's a serving area, actually. The kitchen, there is no kitchen on this site. The kitchen's over on the, uh, Andover, in the main facility in Andover Township, this site. The food is all prepared there and brought to here, so there is a serving area, and there's a bar, but not a kitchen.
Okay. I, I'm just looking at your application, that's why I'm just a little confused. It says, "Construct new patio, kitchen area, bar area, and food service stations adjacent to the barn."
Yeah, it's actually more of a, it's not a food preparation area, it's a warming area. There, so in other words, the food could be brought and warmed, but it's not being prepared on this site.
Okay, so there's no need for a kitchen? Is, is, that, is the kitchen to be removed?
I mean, I don't think there's a, there's a, there's no, there's-
You want me to fill in there? There's, there's a kitchen.
Is this man, I'm sorry, is he sworn in?
He was sworn in earlier.
Oh, I'm sorry.
President of Perona Realty Corporation.
Okay, I'm sorry.
There's a kitchen, there's a kitchen.
Mark, you have to get to a, a microphone. Can you get that up closer, please? Thank you.
In the ASBIL plan, there is a kitchen on-site, and there is a bar on the site.
That's existing.
The kitchen, the kitchen is a grill outside, just like a portable grill. It's against the wall, it's built into the kitchen, and there's a bar, uh, that's not a portable bar, that's a built-in bar.
That is existing.
Existing?
It's existing, so I, all I just said-
Yes, it's existing in the ASBIL plan, correct.
Okay, so, so then, what you're seeking this evening for, is just simply a covering of the existing patio?
Covering, covering of the existing patio that was there previously, right. And we added a, a kitchen and, uh, a port, instead of having a portable bar, we have a regular bar, and instead of a portable, portable grill outside, we have a regular built-in grill now.
Okay. So, then, i- in terms, I, I heard the testimony in the beginning that the occupancy level is not to be increased with the proposed plans, is that correct?
That's correct.
What is the current occupancy level?
150.
150 guests?
Guests.
And, and I'm sorry, is that guest just for the barn, allocated to the barn?
Correct.
Okay, because you, you also have, uh, facilities across the street as well, correct? So, you could have multiple functions going at the same time, correct?
We do.
Okay, so I'm just staying focused on the barn?
Right.
Okay. Um, and then, in terms of the 150 guests, you're not increasing the occupancy level, but you are, you are intention with your business plan to increase the, uh, outdoor activities for your guests, isn't that correct?
We're increasing the out, the size of the area that the guests can utilize, uh, with a covering over it.
Okay. Um, and in terms of, um, your hours of operations and the days of operations, what are the current approved days of operations? Are you aware?
Approved days of operation? I think we can operate any day.
Can I just appoint, because I, I, I'm not sure if I just show you what's, was submitted with your application that says, "Perona Realty Corporation, the barn's summary of prior applications and approvals"?
Okay.
To the barn? I don't know if, if your attorney has a copy of that, I assume he prepared it.
All right, just so the board is aware, that chart was prepared as a result of an open request that we had filed seeking any and all prior approvals. Uh, I can't certify as to the completion of them, because they go back, uh, decades, um, but I will share.
Your last page, I believe it's page three. The date that you have there is December 8th, 2021? The board, the board, this was submitted as part of the application, so the board should have that as well.
December 8th, 2021?
Correct. And in the third bullet point on the right column?
Okay.
This property use described as catering venue, daily operation, 130 employees, 100 parking spaces, 150 daily customers, and parentheses, Thursday through Saturday. Is there a limitation on the hour, the days of, of operation for the catering facility at the barns that you're aware of?
This is what that, no. This is what that was, uh- Catering, we submitted, it says catering daily, 130, 100, 150 daily customers. Most of the business is Thursday through Saturday.
Pardon?
Most of the business is Thursday through Saturday.
So, I, I don't have a copy of the prior site plan approval.
That information was obtained from the site plan waiver application that was submitted by the applicant on December 8th of 2021, uh, and in the narrative, um, Mr. Avondoli, are these your, is this your handwriting?
Correct, my handwriting, right.
And so, these were your notations, uh, that-
Correct.
-accompany that, okay. Um, but you're not aware that this was as a result of any limitation from a board condition, uh, are you?
No.
Okay. And in fact, the septic plant that was previously discussed, uh, provides, uh, a maximum capacity of up to 150, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
So, I'm sorry, what, whatever, were you referring to a prior resolution or site plan waiver?
Yes.
Okay. May I see a copy of that?
This was, uh, again-
The December 8th, 2021?
This was from the application that was prepared by the applicant, uh, and that narrative comes from down here.
Okay, but in, in that narrative, you don't disagree that, if that's your client's own handwriting, that it says Thursday through Saturday?
It says daily.
It says daily. Daily customers.
And then parentheses in the same handwriting, Thursday through Saturday.
Says open daily, 150 people generally are there Thursday through Saturdays.
So, I'm, I'm just confused.
It's open daily, but there usually 150 people there on Thursdays through Saturdays.
I just want to go back to the planner and the engineer real quick for the couple of questions.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Dexter, you're aware that the zone is the, uh, agricultural residential zone, correct?
That, that's right. Rural residential, yes.
Rural residential, so it's the RR zone?
That's correct.
Okay. And you're aware, what are the properties that are surrounding this property? Are they residential?
Yes.
Okay, um, so-
On this side of, uh, in Sparta Township, yes. The, of course, I already mentioned, the other side of Perona Road is the commercial, uh, Perona Farms' main, main facility.
Okay, correct. But relative to, if we just take the barn side, because that's really all we're talking about, that, that is covered, the, the adjacent properties are residenials, correct?
Well, just to the, I mean, basically, you have a large lot and, uh-
Sparta Township.
To the, uh, to the north, you actually have Andover-Sparta Road, and then there is a, there is a house, uh, along Andover-Sparta Road, that's, that's substantial distance. And then you have one other house, uh, directly to the, uh, south of this site. I, that's actually located in Andover Township, a house. And then behind the property is, uh, is basically an open space, uh, stormwater management lot, um, so you don't, so really, there are no, no, no houses, other than the two I mentioned that are close to this property.
Well, I just want to let you know that I represent the, uh, people who own the home that is adjacent to, to this property at 26 Carriage House Road, so they can testify later that they, that they do live in a house that's adjacent to the property.
Do we know what the lot number that is, or I don't? Let's see the, what, what was the address?
26 Carriage House Road. I can show you right on your plan. It's the house, we're, we are the adjacent neighbor that would be most affected by the-
That does, that does, actually, that lot, uh, is, uh, if you look at the exhibit, that's Lot 10, Block 4,006 in Sparta, and the back corner of that lot actually touches our, this subject property at a point.
Correct. It's an, my client's lot-
Oh, it's adjacent, uh, that's correct. But it, but the roadway for that is, uh, is actually, uh, to the south. It's up, they don't have access from Perona Road, they have access from, uh-
Carriage House Line.
Carriage House Line, Carriage House Road.
Right. And then, and then the house that, on Perona Road, that's another residential house that's adjacent. So, you wouldn't disagree that there are residential properties that are adjacent to the subject property, correct?
No, that's correct. It, it is a residential zone, yes.
Okay. And you wouldn't disagree that, for instance, where my client's lot is, that it is, uh, the proposed additions to the patio area is right up against where their property line is, correct?
No, their, uh, their prop, they, they're actually, the, their property is 200 and, about 200 feet from, uh, where your client's property is. That, that the addition, the, the covered patio area, uh, it's actually not an addition, it's just that the, the existing patio where seating already occurred is now covered, so it's not an addition, but the covered area is, is probably 190 feet from, uh, the back corner-
Corner.
-of your client's property, Lot 10.
But my client's property is the adjacent property, correct?
Uh, at, at, at one point, yes. The majority of the adjacent property is-
It either is or it isn't. I don't mean this to be a trick question, I want to move along. I'm just saying it either is or it isn't. It is, correct? You don't disagree?
It is an adjacent property, yes.
So, um, what, i- if, from an engineering standpoint, what analysis, if any, did you do in preparing the plans to minimize any of the noise or other activities that the commercial use would have to the surrounding neighbors?
No, the, this is, uh, this was an existing condition, this, this site plan basically is a, is an out, ASBIL survey of, uh, an existing condition. The covered patio is already there, and the, and that was formerly an outdoor patio. If anything, the, the covering probably reduces noise, because now, now this patio space has, has a, has a roof on it. Whereas before, it was just an open outdoor, uh, an outdoor, open outdoor seating area and gathering area.
Okay.
So, no, there was no analysis done, because, I mean, there's, there's thick vegetation behind the property, on the Sparta property, and, uh, in the direction of your client. There's a lot of existing natural vegetation.
So, if my clients testify later on that they can hear the noise, and it's extremely disruptive with the loud music, and other neighbors will say the same thing, and that's, I don't think, unknown to the applicant at all, you would dispute what, what they have to testify to?
I'm not, uh, I'm not testifying about noise, I'm just, this facility is, is existing, and the only change here is that we added a covering to an outdoor seating area.
Right, so you are not a sound engineer, you're not testifying. So, so you can't testify whether or not the, the proposed roof would decrease any noise there. So, again, I just, again, it's not a trick question, just want to ask the question again, it's real straightforward.
Yeah, I just, uh, I think logically, that would, uh, that would reduce noise, but, uh, no, I'm not a sound expert.
Okay. Um, and, and so based on your testimony, there was no analysis made to diminishing any of the noises or other, um, active, you know, commercial activities that might impact the surrounding neighborhoods in your site plan, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And from a planning perspective, did you give any analysis or planning report, uh, because this is a use variance that, that the applicant has? You're, you're, it's a pre-existing, I couldn't figure out from the reports whether or not it's a pre-existing nonconformity, or whether or not a use variance at one point was granted. Do you know which it is, Mr. Dexter?
Well, I don't have the history of, uh, the file. The facility's been there for many years, and, uh, we know, uh, we know at this point it's an existing non-conforming condition, um, and any expansion to an existing non-conforming condition is, is a use variance, so, you know, that, that's the reason we're before this zoning board.
Right, but from the prior approvals, it appears that you were before the planning board, but that's not even the question that I have. I'm just, for you as a planner this evening, you don't disagree that the property that's, that's the subject of the application is a commercial use in the rural residential zone, correct?
No, no, we don't dispute that, no.
Okay, and that you're looking to expand the, that nonconformity or use variance with the application this evening, correct?
No, my, my opinion is it's not an actual expansion, we just covered part of it, but any change to a pre-existing non-conforming condition requires that you come back before the zoning board, so...
And again, I...
We did not add seating or, but we, the building, there is a covered area there, so that's the, that's the...
So, is that all that you're seeking this evening, is, is, is a roof, there's no chimney, no kitchen?
Basically, yes, that's all they're asking for in, in the whole system, but I just want you to know that we are well aware of the, of the noise requirements in Sparta, and so is the applicant, and we do have a time limit for noise, they have to turn it off at a certain time, okay?
Okay, I think you...
So, I just wanted to let you know that we are aware of that fact, okay?
Correct, and what we would like to do is just with the applicant, since the property is surrounded by residential properties, whether or not there can be some conditions or discussions regarding some amendments that they could easily do, that could help to minimize those, those noises to the surrounding neighbors, because I know my clients are going to testify this evening, and there might be some other neighbors regarding the noise level that's there now.
Okay, that's all we have to make, that point, we, we, we understand where you're coming from, okay?
Okay, I appreciate, and I, I will say, the application was a little confusing to me, I thought they were adding a kitchen and a bar area, so, there's, there's, you know, that's from their application that I saw.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so just one final question, Mr. Dexter, just to make sure, so there was no planning report and no planning analysis on, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Dr. Parker, can I make a suggestion? Counsel, could you give us a proffer as to where you're going with this? We don't need to have an extended hearing tonight over something that the board has acted on, and if your folks have a problem with sound migrating off-site, and that's one of the issues that you're here for, that's fine, the board got that, as Dr. Parker indicated, are there other issues besides that that your folks are concerned about?
I, I don't think it comes as a surprise to the applicant, and as I...
I don't, I don't care about them, I care about my board.
Oh, okay, I think the sound and the noise, you know, I think Perona Farms has been there a long time, but...
I, I got the sound and noise, what else you got?
The fireworks, the fireworks that are, come off, so what we would like is that there's no fireworks run, set off on this property, there's fireworks that are set off more than just on holidays, and those ambers and everything land on my client's property. The noise, we would like to have so that there's, you know, no DJs or other type of music outside, so you, you know, if that DJ's inside a building, it's not going to spill over into the residential neighborhood.
Okay, so we got noise, DJs, fireworks, anything else, Liz?
Well, we just really didn't understand the hours of operation, so from what I understand tonight, again, a little bit of research that I could do, does that run, does it run seven days a week?
Yes.
Okay, so they're allowed to run seven days a week?
Anybody who lives in the county knows Perona's, it runs seven days a week.
Okay.
There may be more busy times, but it runs certainly seven days a week.
Right, I think it's just the noise factor that comes off of there, so, and as I said, I think there's some easy conditions and solutions that can help everybody here.
Why do you think I asked those questions?
I was hoping you were going there, you know.
Okay, I'm sorry, Dr. Parker.
Do you have anything else, ma'am?
No, I'm done with the questioning.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your help. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to be heard in this matter?
Well, Dr. Parker, there might be some additional testimony, I guess, from the public or something, if, in fact, it's needed, but it sounds like Ms. Durkin made a proffer as to the reasons that her people are here, she may want to introduce a witness or two, but the question is whether there are other witnesses that counsel's going to put up as part of the application, I guess.
I don't see anybody getting up.
Mr. Please, is it board?
Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to be heard in this matter?
Yeah, I have actually a question about the covered area.
Okay, come up to the microphone, please raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in respect to this matter?
I do.
Give your name and address to the secretary, please, and spell your last name.
Sure, it's Isabel, I S A B E L, last name Nieto, N I E T O, eleven Carriage House Road, where some of the neighbors are affected as well, it is related to the noise, my question to you is, if you are expanding it by putting a covered area, wouldn't that by default mean that people are able to use that location more often, so throughout colder months, throughout moments when normally the noise would likely be less, and now you're actually causing this to be something that we would have to deal with on a more regular basis?
Well, I, I, you know, obviously, it could be used more, I don't disagree with that, if, if you have a rain, I don't think they're going to use it in cold weather, but either way, whether it's outside dining or not, but the, if it's clement and it's raining, you, you might have people out there where they wouldn't be if it, you didn't have a covered roof.
Okay, so I just want to point out that we're already dealing with noise and, you know, excessive music, and it doesn't just affect people in the adjacent properties, but again, we're across the street and a little further down the road, and we hear it loud and clear within our own house, late into the night, even if it is stopped at ten, we can still hear it, so if there's an additional covering, this noise and this issue's going to be exacerbated now throughout periods of time where we might have had some respite, where now we're not going to potentially. Do you agree that there's a possibility that that...
Well, I already said that there could be, it could be used more often with the covering, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Avendoli, you, you heard, anybody else want to be heard? And then we heard about the noise and everything, if you just want to say yes, you agree with that, just give your name and address, and I'll swear you in.
Sure, sure.
Raise your right hand, please, sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in respect to this matter?
I do.
Please give your name and address to the secretary and spell your last name, please.
Sure, I'm Bob Mira, last name Mira, M E A R A, I'm at twenty-six Carriage House Road, I, if, just, I'm going to be real clear and very brief, from my perspective, I, I've been at Corona Farms a bunch of times, I grew up here, I've lived in Sparta since nineteen seventy-nine, so, I'm, I'm local, I get it, and I'm definitely not trying to rain on Corona's parade by any, by any means, the one thing I, I would say though, is over the last few years, Corona's expanded greatly, to their credit, I think they, they got a great business model, things are going well, and as that's happened, I mean, there's just been a lot more people, a lot more events, and it's a lot more noise, obviously, with our property backing up right to their property, to the point that, I mean, I could literally hear every word to Katy Perry's "Fireworks" inside my house, you know, to make, you know, so my point is, it's just, yeah, it's a lot of noise, my other concern, other than the noise, is just diminished property value, that should they continue to expand, and more and more events, my concern is, you know, should I sell my house or anything like that, my concern would be diminished property value as well, so...
You, I'm sorry, a board member has a question for you.
Yes, absolutely.
Sir, how, how bad is the fireworks issue that one of the other individuals brought up?
I mean, I've, I've had, I've had lit shells land in my yard many times, I mean, I just pick them up, I put them out, and that, you know, that's that, but I mean, because they've had more and more events, obviously, there's more, you know, people buying into the fireworks package, you know, you have that, you run that risk of more, more events, more people are going to buy into the different, the different options.
Thank you, can, can the applicant address that, the fireworks issue, because that's, that's a dangerous thing, that had to happen to my property, where I live residential, I know what they're talking about, so I don't know if there's any way the applicant can address that.
Yes, sir, again, Brian Avendoli, the general manager of programs, I'd be happy to address that and, and talk to both Bob and Isabel's concerns that, that they've raised, which, look, I, I wouldn't want to have, have noise or fireworks if, if my wife and family are there, which, by the way, all of our families do live in, in Andover and Sparta Township, that I'll address the fireworks, since you asked about it, sir, right away, we had some complaints from neighbors several years back about fireworks, and we made a decision with our fireworks provider to drastically change that fireworks display, the shells are smaller, the duration is less, the noise is considerably less, it was a real concern raised several years ago, and I hope that, that if, if anyone has seen a recent fireworks show at Corona Farms in the last several years, it's dramatically different than it's been in the past, I do agree that was a concern in the past, and we took, as a family, took it to heart and made some serious changes to it, so I, I will speak to that already, and I hope maybe that you've seen that in, in the past several, several, I don't know if this property will address it or not, but Bob, I mean, I hope, I hope you've seen that, so...
Are the fireworks in the designated area, or can they be dispersed throughout the entire parcel?
To be clear to the board, none of this takes place in Sparta Township, all of this takes place on a completely opposite corner of a parcel in Andover Township, on the extreme furthest property we own from Sparta Township, it is physically located now, we've also relocated the launch site, it is physically located now as far as it possibly can be from any structure, or any vehicle in the parking lot, or any of your homes that are located in Sparta, that has also changed in the last two years, so there's been some pretty big changes to that.
Thank you.
Do you take into consideration the, the dryness of the area when you do your, your packages?
Yeah, so we, we aren't permitted to make those decisions, the fire marshal for Sussex County, Virgil Rome, makes decisions about where the fireworks can take place and when they can take place, I will tell you, there was a time last year where he called it off, it was too dry and too windy, and he said it was not an appropriate time to have fireworks, there is, I believe, and again, I'm not an expert in the matter, but there's a wind calculation as well, as far as when it can and can't take place, that's all above my, my pay grade, as, as, let the fire marshal make those decisions.
Okay, and that's taken care of each, each time the package is used?
There, there's, it's not only taken care of by the fire marshal, there's formal board action by the full Andover Township Municipal Board, who fully votes every time a fireworks display is asked to be permitted by one of our clients, to be clear, we're not involved in that permitting process, it's something that takes place with the client and the fireworks vendor directly, it's not something that Corona Farms is paid for or compensated for, it's directly something that happens through the, the client and the vendor outside.
Okay, now, the noise that they were, as long as you're doing this, they were talking about noise, in Sparta Township, and this is in Sparta Township, not in Andover, Sparta Township does have a turnoff for certain noise.
Yes, it does, I'm very well aware of those numbers, sir.
Okay, and are, do you, are you working with those numbers correctly?
We, we don't only work with them, we've installed a monitoring system in all of our venues, in both Andover and Sparta, that in real time and visually, for our management team, monitors the exact level of decibels within the building at any given moment, you can go to Corona Farms right now and be happy to take in and show you exactly the decibel meter that's located inside the building, our management team also has a handheld decibel meter to make sure we're well below those levels, as the board knows that the time changes, the decibel level actually changes at ten PM, the level goes ten decibels lower at ten PM than it was at nine PM, that's the reason that ninety-nine point eight percent of our events, the music ends at ten PM, our contracts with our clients outline that the DJ or the band in almost every situation, are there exceptions, on a New Year's Eve wedding and some others, yes, there certainly are, but in every, almost every situation, that DJ or band must end by ten PM, there certainly is a little bit of spillover with clients and guests leaving until around that eleven PM hour vacating the facility, but the music itself from the DJ and the band, in almost every situation, with some certain exceptions, does end at ten PM.
And this band is, is normally inside the building, that's not outside in the patio?
I've, I've been on, on staff at Corona Farms for now five years, we've never had a band for a wedding play outside, the exception to that certainly would be maybe a string quartet, or a harpist, or someone playing at a ceremony, which may take out, outside, take place outside, for any time between fifteen and, and thirty minutes as a general matter, that would happen four thirty, five PM in the evening mostly, even earlier this time of year, because it gets dark, we can't do it outside, but that would be the extent of noise outside, that's an earlier thing, that may be a, a quick performance, occasionally a singer or something like that, performing a wedding ceremony, yes, sir?
Do you set up any outside entertainment on that patio now?
There are, there are three or four built-in speakers, which were specifically positioned to play the music toward the building, instead of away from the building.
But you feed the music from the outside, inside to the...
That's right, sir, we have direct control over that inside, it's not something that someone would come out there and, and have a band outside.
Just one last question with fireworks, how long do they go on with that package? You're talking hours, or...
No, gosh, it, it varies, it's, it's anywhere from seven to twelve minutes as, as a general matter, I think that the bigger package may be fifteen as, as the top end, but I don't...
And that's it after it's done, that, that's seven to twelve minutes, and there's no other fireworks after that?
That's it, I guess unless you wanted to buy more and more, but the, the general packaging is, is set up that way.
Sir, did they answer your questions?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, he did answer the question, I, I think at the same time, too, with all due respect, I mean, I think the point obviously is the noise, and, and obviously diminish, potential of diminished property value, I mean, so my perspective to, to you, I, I think would just be, I mean, what can we do to work together to, to not make it so, you know, and I think other people would, would share, obviously, I think other people would share the same concerns, obviously.
Absolutely, and I would say, we, we want to be a good neighbor, we've been here for a long time, want to continue being here, it's important to our family, and to, to work with our neighbors, right, our neighbors are our clients, our customers, our friends, it, it's all important, we'd love to have further conversation about that, like I said, we are directly monitoring all those decibel levels to make sure we're not doing that, and I would, I can't speak to what happened five years ago, I don't know, how long have you been in the, the house?
Eighteen years, yeah.
And I've been here for, for about five, and I can say that, that probably my first year in is when we put that decibel system in place, to make sure we're actually monitoring, it's not an issue, so...
I have, if I could share with...
Excuse me, you'll have to be sworn in.
That's fine.
Would you please raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in respect to this matter?
I do.
Should give your name and address to the secretary, please.
Tammy Mira, twenty-six Carriage House Road, you had just said that there have never been bands outside, I have video from last year, this is what you can hear outside of our house.
What time of the day is that, ma'am?
That's, good question, it's at night.
Before ten o'clock?
Maybe, I don't, I don't remember.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, so, definitely, there have been bands and DJs outside, and you can hear what we hear, okay, and this is all the time.
Is it possible that what you're hearing is from your outdoor speakers?
I, I don't think so, I'm, again, not a, not a sound engineer, I'd love to learn more about when that could have happened and look into it a little more personally to find out.
Okay, why don't you just contact her and get that straightened out?
Be happy to do it.
And let me make a suggestion.
We did call the police also about the sound, and I know other neighbors also have called the police in regards to the noise, and the police told us that different DJs have different ways of calibrating their equipment, and therefore, it may not always meet the decibel that it's supposed to be at.
And that's why we maintain the decibel meter inside, the decibel meter has nothing to do with the DJ, it's a Corona Farms installed device in the building, that's directly visible to both the DJ and our manager, it's also something that all of the vendors who work at Corona Farms are required to sign an agreement before they work there, that they understand the basic rules, things like parking and loading, and one of those things is the decibel situation, in all of our venues, to be very clear about what those numbers are.
One last question, have you received any form of violations from Sparta and Andover on noise and their fireworks?
Aware of, sir.
Or violations of the defines?
I might have to check with the company secretary to make sure, but nothing that I'm personally aware of.
Could you have, do you have the capabilities on those outdoor speakers to check the decibel levels outside?
We can check the decibel level anywhere on the property with the handheld meter that we've purchased, so we can certainly...
Okay, so, and if, can then you can lower the volume on the inside?
Absolutely.
Okay, now, you know what the volumes are in Sparta, they're, they're...
I do.
They're part of the rules, okay?
Yep, I'm very well aware of it, between the hours of seven and ten, and then between ten and seven, there's a different set of rules.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And no noise after, was it ten or ten-thirty, whatever it is?
Do you think that, that video that I just played meets the decibel requirement that you have?
I, I have no idea, I can't, I don't know where that video, I don't know.
You can hear it that clearly and loudly at our property that is adjacent, you think that meets the decibel level?
I, I'm not aware of what meets or where you are, I, I can't answer that question, I'm sorry.
Okay, why don't you guys get together, and he promised to bring the decibel level down if he can, right?
Sir, look, we, like I said, we monitor it, it's in our best interest to continue operating with a friendly relationship with everyone in the community, so they're...
I understand that, sir.
Adrian Cepero, eleven Carriage House Road.
Will you raise your right hand, please, sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you?
I do.
Okay, well now, spell your last name and give your name and address again, please, for the secretary.
Adrian Cepero, C E P E R O, and that's eleven Carriage House Road, we live across the street as well, live with my wife, I can tell you that with the covered, so, you know, I don't know if it's covered, uncovered, what it is that they're building, if it's built, the, the, the conversation that went on today, I'm not at these planning meetings a lot, so I'm very confused by what happened, it sounds like, I mean, almost from the conversation that happened, that something was built, and now they're asking if they can use it, which is odd, I've never built a pool and then asked if I can use it, so, that's bizarre, but anyway, that's, that's the point, since that outdoor patio has been in use over the last year, year and a half, I don't know how long it's been, the noise level definitely has increased, it, you, I, it went from muffled sounds, like just kind of hearing people inside the building, to more so I could hear entire conversations outside, you know, into the late hours, whether it's ten, until the crowd disperses at eleven, so it has definitely affected the properties surrounding the Corona Farms, to an extent that the, in the barn itself maybe didn't, so that's the piece that we're all very concerned about, because what it sounds like is that they built something, now they're asking if they can use it, but they've been using it, that's what it sounds like.
Have you ever made the complaint directly to Corona Farms?
No, we really haven't, we haven't claimed directly to them, yeah, we haven't, no, we haven't, we, we did reach out to them about the fireworks, to be on their list of notifications, because it was becoming a nuisance, there were a couple mortar shells this, this past summer that shook our whole house, our dog goes crazy whenever there's fireworks that go off, so it's, it's been, that's been a little bit of a, something that we had to prepare for, so whenever we get a notification, we know it's going to know what's going to happen, and we kind of, you know, have our children up so that they're not in bed, because they wake up startled. So, that is more of a nuisance than, you know, the music itself, they deal with a lot more of that than we do. Inside the home, we hear it, but it's not as bad as for them. When you're out on our backyard, on our patio, you can hear it, like we're like next door, the party's happening.
How far away are you from it?
We are across probably less than a quarter mile, I would say, from the property.
Okay, just for perspective, that's all.
The issue is the way that I think the sound flows there, because we're on the side of a mountain.
It comes around the back.
Yeah, it all echoes up. So, we can hear the DJs, we can hear bands, you can hear everything, like it's almost in our backyard.
Okay.
So, that's the one issue, biggest issue.
Okay, well, maybe they didn't realize that, but we're going to give Brian a chance to answer that.
I'd certainly like to learn more about it, for really, I really would. I wasn't aware that maybe it was at the level it is. We are, again, trying to control it well within the limits of the town. If there's a way we can do that better, we will certainly do so.
Okay, but just to keep everybody's perspective straight, we're dealing tonight with a D-variance that just is dealing with the roof that is over an existing patio. So, if anything else can be handled, I think that maybe you guys can handle it by yourselves, okay?
And if I could just give a little clarity, sir, for just, to answer your question, but we're using it, we're not. This board previously approved the roof through a site plan waiver, I believe is the correct terminology. Sorry, I don't know how that all works, but the roof was previously approved, it was built with building permits through Sparta Township, that was all done correctly. We came back in front of this board because we decided that instead of rolling a portable bar in and out, and rolling a portable grill in and out, we were going to put those two things outside in a more permanent way. The board asked that rather than having that as a site plan waiver, we come back here today to outline the full project with the roof and the stuff inside, so we're clear with exactly how it's being used. I think that's why we're here this evening, so.
Okay.
Let me, Dr. Parker, let me set something. The board didn't request anything.
Okay.
The board's sitting here as a judge. The board gets the package that comes in, so it might have been staff, it might have been our zoning officer.
Understood, sorry.
It might have been Mr. Simmons. Anybody but the gentleman sitting up here.
Someone in the administrative...
I want to make that clear for the public, just so, I know counsel understands.
Why don't any approvals that this board had, that's what I'm just saying.
All right, well, they'll have to, that's why, that's why Mr., that's why counsel is here for the applicant. And there are a list of, this has been before this board many, many times, when Mr. Quinn was sitting in this chair, and before that also, and there are a number of members on this board that have been here for a number of these applications, I suspect, besides, well, there are a number of you. This isn't the board's first rodeo on this site.
I'm just going based on the chart of the approval steps submitted by the applicant, they say claiming...
Okay, we take your judicial notice of your complaint.
I'm not complaining.
Okay. Does it, sir, do you have anything else to add?
No, I just want to stress that whole, you know, the concept of the roof, you know, again, this approval to build the roof, because the roof is already there, so that's...
Well, it's a little bit more complicated than that, but I understand your question, okay?
So, I wasn't sure when we saw the notice if it was, this is an additional patio on top of everything that's there, which is also concerning, only because...
Who would have concerned us, too?
Yeah, further expansion would be, you know, detrimental to everyone in that neighborhood.
All right, thank you for your input, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience wishes to be heard? Okay, we'll close it to the public and bring it back to the board. Do the board members have any other questions that we'd like to ask the applicant? Okay, then the chair will accept the motion.
Dr. Parker, there's kind of a sidebar going on down there, and I don't know whether it's maybe resolving some of the...
Well, maybe if they're resolving their committee problems.
Counsel? Meeting's really going on at this end, is there anything you want to share before the board makes a motion and a decision? Else you, anyone who's there? No.
Okay. The chair will accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, have our board attorney prepare a resolution approving application 21-22, block 4006, lots 13 and 14, 7 Perona Road, use variance site plan approval, with the following conditions. Add an easement or license agreement for the existing pavement that extends into Sparta Township. Be arranged, the outside patio area not to be enclosed. Also, the applicant accepts our board engineer, Mr. Simmons', report adhering to all his points in the report, and also has build plans to be provided, according to all the testimony and plans submitted here tonight.
Just a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Diana, would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Gentlemen, I hope you do get a little bit of feedback from the audience. This has nothing to do with our board, but as a member of the town, I think you should work with them a little bit, okay? We don't have, we don't have any jurisdiction on that, but we can certainly ask you to do that, okay? Thank you. Next, I need... Blaster Services, number 2222. That's at 290 North Church Road. Is anybody in the audience wish... Ah, there we go.
When are we going to break? When are you opening the break?
We can break now if you need one.
No, just to the public, aware.
Oh. You want a break now?
No, just, unless you do.
Okay. We'll keep going and we'll break before, we'll break right afterward if we have to.
I should break, I would say, with him.
We get close to 9 o'clock, I'll break anyway.
11 o'clock, not back an hour.
No. I'm watching my wife.
I was like, I said, this speed, he's going fast, we're stopping, hard stop at 10, right?
Yes.
He's a hard stopper.
No, we may break around 9 o'clock. Is there anybody here from Rock Island? I just want to make you aware, it's our policy to stop at 10 o'clock, okay? And we don't start another appointment after 9:30. So, if we're getting close and you want to leave, let me know and we'll reschedule, otherwise we'll see how we're doing, all right? And you noticed we only have six members, and you still want to stay? Okay.
Chairman, out of courtesy of the other applicant, is one out of the room, what do we have, two more, right?
Yes, they're both, well, go ahead.
Fairly extensive, so...
I don't know, we'll have to see.
I was going to say, but the other ones...
Well, I just gave him the opportunity to leave and he said no. Okay? Okay. That's a kiss of death, don't say that.
Respect for the other applicant as well.
I didn't know the other one was going to take that long either.
Okay, now, listen to me, sir. This is a D-variance, and we have six members. Are you still willing to go ahead?
We are.
Okay, thank you. And who are your witnesses for this, sir?
So, we're going to have Mr. Deister, Doug Deister, I believe he's the president of the board, and Jason Alora, he's a representative of the business.
Do you want to bring them both up and we'll swear them in? Thank you, sir, you should use that mic.
Jason Alora, A-L-L-O-R-A.
Excuse me, sir. Just please, everybody who's going to be sworn in, Mr. Deister, just please all raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in respect to this matter?
I do.
Okay. Mr. Deister, you could start off, just give your name and address of why you're associated with this, and what position you're going to take tonight.
I'm Douglas Deister, professional land surveyor, professional planner, I'll be testifying as a planner and a surveyor in regards to this matter. My address is 24 Angelo Drive, Sparta, New Jersey.
Mr. Deister, you've been in front of this board many times, is your license is still valid?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Sir?
Jason Alora, A-L-L-O-R-A, one of the partners of Bel Air Services. My address is 51 Lake Trail West, Harding, New Jersey.
Okay, thank you, sir. Now, if you can, you want to stand or whatever, but you can bring a chair in if you want to just sit down, okay?
Okay, I'll call you up when it's time.
Okay. And when, Mr. Deister, remember you got to use the mic, okay? And you too, sir. And you can sit down, counselor, and pull that mic over to you, if you can. Oh, we got it stuck.
Got it.
The only thing that works around here is the glue.
It's going to take a lot to hold that mic down, let me tell you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Daniel Bankendorf from the law firm of Askin and Hooker, representing Bel Air Services, here tonight on their behalf, Jason Alora, a partner of the, of the firm, and then additionally Doug Deister, here as our expert in surveying and as a planner. This evening, we're here tonight to discuss a property located at 290 North Church Road, also known as Route 94, in Sparta, block 14,001, lot 41. The lot consists of 4.6 acres approximately in the RC-2 Rural Conservation District, excuse me, zone. This evening, we're before the board for approximately, I'd say, three things. Number one, site plan approval, and number two, there are a number of pre-existing non-conforming bulk variances that we're requesting relief from, and then additionally, a D-variance relief for bus repairs and inspections. This is kind of an odd use in a residential zone if you don't know the history of the lot. So, I wanted to go over that briefly, I believe Doug's going to spread, shed some more light on that as well. So, currently on the site, there is an approved use for crane repair, large, many tire cranes on the site being repaired. Prior to, and that was done in 19, or 2016. Prior to that, there was a permission to work on heavy equipment and trucks on the site. Prior to that, oddly enough, there was a bus operation. The 1987 resolution referenced a bus operation on the site. So, as far as I'm concerned, there's certainly a history, again, Doug can go over that, a history of heavy equipment, truck, crane, repair on the site, not to mention some sort of bus operation that existed on the site prior to 1987. This evening, I discussed some bulk variances, they're pre-existing, non-conforming variances that were permitted. Nothing on this site is changing as far as the building, the parking, everything is staying exactly the same, provided Mr. Simmons has any concerns or questions that he wants answered or things changed. Aside from that, nothing on the site is actually changing.
Counsel, let me ask you a question, so we can make this more straightforward. The variances that you're talking about, you just traced the fact that in 1987 there was an operation. Did you, or Mr. Deister, find evidence that the board had previously granted variance relief on these, or are these pre...
Yes.
Yes, I could speak to that.
So, I don't even want to talk about that with you. I want him to put that on the record, because if the board's already acted on those, we don't have to have a do-over on those, if you found the record, Doug.
Understood.
All right, but Dan, go ahead and finish up.
Okay, sure, sure. All right, so, without further ado, I'd like to bring Mr. Deister in on this and let him begin his testimony.
Kudos, Dr. Parker, you really took a hint.
I'm learning.
I think I'd be the only person on the board who sat on those other ones, I don't know. Maybe you were, Ken, right?
I was just going to run through them quick, but that's fine.
So, good evening, everybody. You've been introduced to the site and the applicant. The street address is 290 North Church Road, also known as New Jersey State Highway Route 94. The lot and block designation is tax lot 41, block 14,001. The site is located on the northwesterly side of Sparta, on Route 94. If you can visualize a homestead restaurant out there, it's next door to that, to the south. If you're facing it to the left, correct. Overall, the location is 2.5 miles north of the intersection with Route 15, and it's five miles south of the intersection with State Highway Route 23 in Hamburg. That's important because of the operation we'll be running here, to show its proximity to the highway, its front lawn, as well as the highways in the area. Bel Air Services seeks to continue a previously approved use to allow for the inspection and repair of buses and repair of heavy machinery. Previously, the original application from 1987 from Monroe Equipment Company was approved for the storage, repair, and maintenance of heavy equipment. In 2016, the site was applied for a continuance of that first variance, and it was granted for the same, storage, repair, and maintenance of heavy equipment, with the caveat of adding crawler and piling rigs. I'm not exactly sure what they are, but they're crane-like, and they, they're tall. When we speak of the storage area, that's on sheet two of your plan, it's located behind the building. The building is a reference in Dave's report, is a 6,008 square foot masonry building. It's located to the rear of the property, Route 94, everyone, access drive, paved for the first 100 feet or so, a couple drainage crossings, gravel drive to the site, large, open gravel area in back. Approximately 170 feet in this direction, 160 feet in this direction. With that said, as far as special reasons and positive criteria, the property has a long history of being used to store, repair, and maintain heavy equipment. Additionally, the central location with the county, within the county, and its proximity to state highway system, make it ideal for moving buses and equipment to and from the site. The continued use will not have a negative impact on the zone plan or scheme, as this site is appropriately located and allows access throughout the county. Further, the property has a long history of this usage and will not have a detrimental effect on the surrounding area. There are, do you have questions regarding the use with the buses?
Are you finished, Mr. Deister?
I think I am ready to take questions.
Okay, I am going to ask Mr. Simmons, he has a report that he would like to go through, and we'll get finished with that. Mr. Simmons?
This is reference to the report I prepared dated October 18, 2022. With regards to the zoning, we've discussed it, it's in the Rural Conservation Residential Zone, and I made a list of the various bulk requirements that are not up to the particular code, but again, I noted that depending on which building you're looking at, they're all existing conditions. And again, my understanding of the application is that they're not proposing any changes to the buildings or any site changes, which would exacerbate the existing deficiencies, bulk requirements that I just outlined. I would point out that on this property, up by 94 on the north, northeastally corner, perhaps Mr. Deister could also point out, there's an existing wood frame building that's also part of this property, just so that doesn't slip through the cracks on anyone. It's an existing situation. I don't know what the applicant proposes to do with that particular building, if it's just going to be used for storage, or if it's going to be vacant.
This is, property is being leased by Bel Air. The current owner will have control of that. We are not taking that on as part of the lease.
So, the wood frame building will not be used by your client?
Not at all.
Okay, I just wanted to clear that up for everyone. With regards to the site plan, I agree with Mr. Deister's assessment of it. I was out to the site, I know it's been used for heavy truck and heavy equipment repairs by Monroe Equipment in the past. The gravel area in the back, the, call it the westerly side of the large building, the the gravel parking lot was in good shape, well-graded. I did not see any problems with that. I did notice a few things as far as encroachments and what have you. I did notice there was a shed that encroaches over to Lot 40. My recollection from being on that property in the past was that may have been used for some cell tower equipment. At one time, I believe there was a cow on the site, a cellular on wheels, the acronym for that. The cell tower itself is gone on a trailer. I don't know if the applicant's using that storage building or since they're leasing it, if it's just there.
It's just there.
Okay, so I wanted to point that out to the board. That's what I believe.
So you're not using those two buildings at all?
He's referring to this, right, Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Yeah, and it is. I looked at that and scratched my head, wondering what it was. And I saw on the record someone had made mention of a cell. A cow? Yeah.
Then with regards to proposed use, are the buses going to be just serviced at this site or are they going to be stored there as well?
Okay, so buses will come in and out and be serviced, basically same day. However, you'll have a queue. So on any given day, four, six, there's room for about 10 buses in addition to the 17 parking spots. So let's say a big day at the shop, you're gonna see 10, 2 inside, 10 outside, 12 total. But they'll be cycling in and out.
It's not intended, other than the queuing for service, to have it as a storage facility?
No.
Okay. And the follow-up question to that, will there be any for block heaters or anything else? Any electrical facilities installed to heat the, preheat the buses?
Dan, I don't have any answer. Yeah, no, that's okay. The client can testify to that, but he doesn't intend to hook anything up out there as far as block heaters, except for maybe an extension cord, but he doesn't generally use them.
Okay. Then with regards to parking, as Mr. Dykstra just said, they do have room for 17 possible locations. But again, the buses are gonna be larger than a normal parking space size, and there is sufficient room back there based on my field inspection and looking at the plan to store those buses.
In fact, there were seven of them out there this weekend.
Is that right? Okay.
I saw six this morning.
And with regards to parking spaces for the wood frame building we talked about earlier up by Route 94, again, my understanding is that that's not part of what this client is going to be leasing, but there is room for additional parking up there if the applicant or the property owner, I should say, should come in and wanna do something else with that particular building. With regards to storm drainage, basically, the way this site works, the drainage, as Mr. Dykstra pointed out, runs through some cross drains under the long access drive from Route 94 to the back of the property. And basically, the, most of the front area basically serves as an infiltration basin. And I'm sure people have been by there over the years and seen in the spring or heavy rains and snow melt time of the year where that floods basically until it infiltrates into the ground. Probably the one concern I have that I think should be addressed as part of this application is to the south of the subject property, there's Block 14,001, Lot 42. And on your site plan map on Sheet 2, there's a riprap area. I believe part of that riprap area is part of the infiltration basin. And I'm not sure about this, but the owner of that property may have been involved with Monroe Equipment many years ago. And the applicant can address that. But I think that as part of this overall application, it probably should be appropriate to reserve some sort of an easement agreement because that is gonna flood onto the adjacent property. And my concern is if the properties change hands and someone isn't in agreement with that situation, that could lead to a difficulty. So I'll let Counselor address that.
Yeah, we're asking that it not be a condition of approval because my client has no control over that buffer. There's just, he can't, he can't demand that that be taken care of. And if the owner says no, then it doesn't, it doesn't help my client. What's my client to do? So as a result, we're just asking that there be no condition of an easement for that area. It's not, you know, it's not that my client disagrees, it's just that he has no control over that. We can't, we can't tell our, you know, the property owner that he has to give an easement. I don't think the property owner's here. Maybe you could ask if he is.
I don't know if the-
I haven't had conversation with him. I did send him an email, I got no response.
Right. Again, this isn't to cause the applicant before the board an issue, but based on the way I described it, I'm just trying to look out for the future, and it's in front of us right now. That's my suggestion in order to make it, regardless of who's using this property, I just know that front part of the property's gonna flood. That's the way it was designed. And if the two properties, not necessarily by this applicant, who is just leasing this property, if the properties are sold to two different entities and somebody decides, well, I'm gonna fill in that riprap area, now we've got a drainage problem.
Is it spoken to in your lease agreement? And owner's responsibility to do improvements to support your operation?
Not to that effect, no.
Glenn, do you have any comments on that particular thing?
I do.
I figured you might. Go ahead.
I was thinking, subject to Dave giving you a nod, I was thinking that you could maybe suggest a condition that prior to any change in ownership, not leasing, since it's in the rear of the property, that the applicant, that the owner is, should be, is being put on notice, that they should provide an appropriate easement. Put that in as a condition and just give them notice. The owner had to consent to this application coming in. So it's as if the owner is here. They can't obviously blind the owner, I'm not suggesting that, but I think you could at least call it out so that people are on notice.
Would it be not only ownership of the real property, but termination under, of the lease at time of the lease?
If you would like to go that way, absolutely. That's fine. Because that doesn't, that doesn't-
We're not opposed to putting some sort of restriction on the sale of the property because we have no, again, it has no-
Or change, or change-
Of ownership, yeah.
Yeah, or change in lease.
Yeah.
Because it isn't, the way the lease is structured, it appears, unless I'm wrong, Dave, it appears that that problem up there isn't going to impact them. But you're absolutely right, it could impact somebody in the future.
Correct.
So I think that's, that's probably a really good way of putting it.
Yeah, that's fine. That we will do.
I would just also note for the record that for them to have been here, the applicant, the owner had to consent.
Right, he has to know about that.
That's right.
Because he's owned that property for a while when we went through this before. This is nothing new to the owner.
That's right.
Then moving on to lighting, there's no proposed changes on any of the buildings, and I know there's lighting on the building. With regards to the architectural plans, again, no changes proposed, no changes in landscaping. Where they're proposing their bus servicing is behind the existing building, so it's well buffered that way. With regards to the sewer and water, there's an existing well, an existing septic system that they'll have to obtain confirmation from the county health department if it's adequate. I don't know if they're proposing any changes to the freestanding sign or any facade signs on the building.
No changes.
Okay, the only thing I will point out-
Gonna put the name on it?
Just, just the name.
Just the name? Okay.
The only thing I will point out, the ASBIL survey shows that the existing freestanding sign encroaches into the Route 94 right away. And I would recommend that that be moved back into the property.
If we rebuild it, right.
Yeah, it's not that big a sign.
No, it's not.
It's a wooden sign.
When you change the name, put the number of the 290, make sure that that's on the sign, okay?
Then with regards to an EIS, an environmental impact statement wasn't submitted, but I would just ask the applicant to comment if they're going to set up any fuel tanks on-site for the buses and how they're gonna dispose of their waste oils and products.
And the applicant will testify to that.
I was gonna say, we're gonna get to that because there is an area that you're uncovering.
Then I listed some approvals that I believe they'll have to either get approval from or have verification from different agencies. And upon any changes, especially the freestanding sign, if that's all we're talking about moving, the ASBIL will be updated to reflect that. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Dave, just a quick reminder for myself, how far over the aquifer is this?
I don't know of any studies that have been done on that, but I know this facility has existed for decades.
And I remember we didn't allow hazard materials or anything, and they have to-
No, that's why-
We'll have to get some testimony on that.
That's correct. That's why there wasn't an EIS. And I know from the previous, one of the previous tenants on the property, Monroe Equipment, they had facilities to take waste oil and have it properly disposed of. So that's why I just wanna make sure it's taken care of with this particular applicant.
Dave, you mentioned the 17 parking spaces, but the two previous resolutions also had referenced a restriction of maximum of 14 disabled vehicles.
That's a good point, and my suggestion is when the applicant comes up before the board, perhaps they can put some testimony on the record that they're basically just servicing and repairing. There won't be any disabled buses on the property.
Other than, other than a flat tire? To say that it's, you know, I guess, I guess defining disabled will be the-
Anything on the property council is going to be disabled in one form or another? Once you pull the oil plug on the bus-
You have more than 14 vehicles parked back there at any one time.
And we're gonna get to that. How many buses are parked there on a regular basis? The maximum amount of buses that will be parked there on, you know, on any given day? Also, what other vehicles will be on property? So you have a good idea of what the parking is on that property. And it certainly is within the guise of what Doug has discussed.
Okay. The applicant's gonna testify to that.
Yes, he is.
That's all I have, sir.
Glenn, do you have anything? Would you like to bring the applicant up because we have some questions for him?
Before you release, before you release, Dave, when you were reading, just for the record, when you were reading the previous approvals, what inspection prep into it at one point? All right, because, understanding what, why that was added or what's involved with inspections?
Well, briefly, a van from the state comes to inspect on a schedule. Six members of an inspection team come in one van, inspect multiple vehicles, and they leave.
And previously, they didn't do that in?
That was not part of any of the previous operations.
We don't know about that.
This has to do with the fact that there's school buses? As opposed to commercial vehicles?
Exactly.
Okay, we can get testimony on that.
Okay, yep. Doug, Sussex County as a whole, generally, the students need to be transported to the schools, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and as a result, they use school buses, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and those school buses need maintenance, correct?
Yes.
And so as a result of this, this application supports a regional need for a school bus repair?
It does.
Okay, all right. Okay, if the applicant's application is not approved tonight, the current use of the property is still going to be the ability to repair a large, heavy equipment, including cranes, rigs-
Approved use, as it stands, is very similar, just not buses.
Okay, and those vehicles, the apparatus on them generally needs to be repaired outside of the building, is that correct?
As I read it in one of the previous resolutions, was assess and test outside. If possible, bring the vehicle in for repair.
Okay.
Okay, and with these cranes, for instance, they had to bring, back them back out and then put them up. So if you wanna visualize that from the street, you're gonna see all these cranes up in the air on a given day. That, we're not gonna have.
Right, and the equipment on these rigs needs to be stored somewhere, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and generally, you can't store a lot of those types of things inside the building?
They had approval for storage of, I forget the number of building, of crane type, what do I call them, crawls, pile rigs? Like I said, I'm not exactly sure what these things look like, but they had an area measuring 160 by 170 back here for storage of those vehicles.
Okay, well, in addition to the vehicles, the parts?
And the parts, yes.
Right, and so those parts generally would need to be stored outside, being as large as they were?
Hard to say which, but I'm sure they would-
But certainly, the same, the same need is not for school buses, is that correct?
I would testify that the impact of parts and labor and bus repair will be less than what you have now.
Okay, no further questions for this witness.
Would you bring your other witness up, please?
Certainly, Jake, come on up. All right, Jake, you wanna just discuss what Bel Air Services is?
We are a school bus maintenance, inspection, and repair facility.
Okay, and what is the inspection part of that?
The state team will, on schedule, come to our facility and inspect the safety and operations of the yellow school buses.
We had discussed it the other day. Can you explain it the way that you explained it to me?
So basically, the state will come to our facility in their own truck with their own testing equipment, with their own jacks, with their own tools. One state inspector will inspect the inside of the vehicle. One state inspector will inspect the undercarriage of the vehicle. One state inspector will inspect the engine of the vehicle. One state inspector will inspect the brakes of the vehicle. So there is compartmentalization of each section of the school vehicle being inspected. That's all done inside the building. Once the inspectors sign off on their given sections, a brake test is performed to test the integrity of the brake lines, where the buses basically stepped on, the brakes are stepped on to see if the brake lines will hold. You know, if the brake lines break, the test did its job. It tests the integrity of the brake lines. That's the only time that the vehicle itself is turned on during the inspection. The entire inspection occurs with the vehicle off. After that brake test, the inspection is over. That vehicle is either given a sticker, the regular inspection stickers that you would see on your car in the window, or an out-of-service sticker that would go across which would basically prevent that vehicle from transporting students until those items are corrected.
And that is, that is what the inspection portion of this application represents?
Correct, that's what an inspection entails.
And all those individuals show up in one car?
Correct, a state truck, basically.
All right, so that's only, it only, it only deals with one parking space on-site, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. What days are you planning on operating throughout the week?
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday, okay. And hours of operation, what are the hours of operation?
Seven in the morning, seven in the morning till 5:00, 6:00 at night.
Okay, what's 5:00 or 6:00?
6:00.
Okay, all right. How many employees at the most will you have on-site at any given day?
Four.
Four, okay. What do those employees consist of?
Two technicians, two office staff.
Okay, so a total of four vehicles, is that correct?
Correct.
So far, we have one vehicle for state employees to come inspect the buses, four vehicles for employees, for a total of five vehicles at this point, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, approximately, how many buses will be on-site at any given day?
10 to 12.
12, okay, and you say 12, does that mean all the buses are gonna be parked outside? Or is some of the buses gonna be parked inside?
There's space for two vehicles in the shop, there's two bays, two 54-passenger vehicles can fit inside the shop, and then spots outside for the remaining 10.
Okay, so on any given day, you're not gonna have more than 10 school buses outside unless buses are being brought in and out of the facility?
Correct.
Okay, so at a total, you'll have 12 school buses, and we're looking at six vehicles so far, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and additionally, explain how customers interact with the business.
So typically, we don't interact with customers off the street. This is a contract facility. 99% of our work is all through state contract with school boards and boards of education. We don't solicit mom and pops off the street. Customers do not walk up to the building and ask for an oil change. Private companies do not come up to the building and ask for oil changes. We do not service private companies. All of our contract is with municipalities, boards of ed's, and fleets.
So the majority of business is by appointment only, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and a customer technically would be bringing a bus in, dropping it off, and picking up a bus, is that correct?
Correct, there's no waiting while you get serviced.
Okay, so there's no like lobby or anything like that?
No.
Okay, all right. So at most, you have a few extra cars, we'll say three extra cars in addition to the five that we've already discussed, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Now, we heard about engine block heaters. Is there gonna be any sort of apparatus set up outside for the purpose of heating the blocks of the buses?
No.
No, are you gonna be running extension cords to the buses on occasion?
We could, it's a possibility. We would run an extension cord from the shop to a vehicle from the inside of the shop.
Okay, let's briefly talk about storage of different items on-site. Garbage, do you have a spot for the garbage?
Yes, we have a container through Waste Management.
Okay, and is that enclosed in a dumpster? Okay, and is that enclosed in a dumpster enclosure?
Yes.
Okay, and let's say used tires on site, where do you plan on storing them?
Used tires can be stored in racks outside or inside, depending on whether or not they're on rims.
And how often are they retrieved?
Once a month.
Once a month, and approximately, how many tires are you looking at having outside on any given day?
On any given day?
Yeah, four per bus, approximately. Approximately, how many used tires will you have outside?
Uh, it's actually six per bus, but we could use, four to six per bus, depending on the size, but we could use anywhere between six to twelve tires, really. They're, they're very expensive, so we try not to keep a lot of them.
Gotcha, gotcha. And, and all of the new tires will be stored inside?
Correct, or we, we hire a company to come and change our tires for us. The bigger tires, we don't change ourselves. A company would come in, drop off fresh tires, take the old ones as they're being changed. There's really no storage of the larger tires.
Okay, all right, and any other storage will be done inside, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so oil, for example, that's taken out of the vehicles, where is that stored?
There's a oil storage, waste oil storage tank inside the, the facility, currently.
Okay, and, and if the board requires, you'll, you'll have no problem having that inspected prior to operating or putting any oil into that?
Correct.
Okay, and what about other fluids and liquids that come with the buses that you might need to change or, or do something with? What do you do with those?
Everything would be in its own containers stored inside the, inside the, the building.
Okay, so for example, like you were talking about brake fluid that's stored in the brake fluid containers, and, you know, otherwise, you don't have a need to store brake fluid?
Correct.
Okay. I believe those are all the questions I have for this witness.
Okay, I, I have a question. Basically, do you have a written plan for emergencies, spills? Do you have training for your, for your employees? What do you do when there's an oil spill? Or brake fluid breaks and you have it screwing all over the ground or something? Do you have a plan for that?
We do not have something on the books, so to speak, but there is procedures that we follow.
Okay, do you have a written plan for, and train your employees on what to do?
We do not have it written, but they are, they are trained on what to do.
Mr. Simmons, don't we normally require a maintenance plan for some things like this to be put to the planning board or the planning department?
We normally have it in other applications, Mr. Chairman, especially if it's in the wellhead protection area. Basically, what it is, it's a written plan that the applicant share with the fire department, so they're aware of what's going on and what, what chemicals or fluids are kept on site, so they're available and understand what they'd have to deal with if something should happen. And also, usually, there's a spill kit that's kept on site so that Speedy Dry or one of the absorbent booms can be placed around the area so that it's ready to be taken care of and confined.
We do have that type of equipment. That is the stuff that we do do to contain spills.
That'll be a condition, and you'll have to make that plan available, okay?
Without a doubt.
All right. Basically, just, you went through the inspection, and we've all had our cars inspected, so we understand that system. But the maintenance, what type, exactly just what you do? You just change the tires, change the oil? Any motor work, you get shipped somewhere else, or what?
So by law, school buses have to be maintained or looked at four times a year by an approved school bus inspection shop in addition to two times a year by the state? So one school bus theoretically gets looked at by law six times a year, four times by a shop, twice by the state. So those, I guess you could call them quarterly inspections by us, are checking everything the state checks during their six-month inspection. So we're checking lights, brakes, seats, engine oils, anything that we find not up to state standards, we will fix up to state standards.
Okay, so in other words, if they need oil, you put oil in?
Correct.
But you don't go actually come in and change it every five thousand miles?
Oh, sure.
They take that somewhere else?
No, we will change it if it is necessary.
Yes, but I mean, that's not your normal routine, only if it's necessary, right?
Only if it's necessary.
Okay. All right, a typical bus comes in. Run the board through what a typical bus will run through that comes in, and we understand the inspection stuff.
Barna Bus Number One is due for its quarterly inspection in January. We'll take the bus in. We have a check sheet supplied to us by the state of seventy-five different items that we have to inspect on that vehicle. We take two hours to inspect that one school bus, sign off on it. If there's any problems that we find, we will let the town know of the deficiency of that bus and get their approvals to fix it, whether it be stickers that are faded, whether it be seats that are ripped, whether it be bulbs that are out. We will let them know what's wrong with that school vehicle, and what, and we will fix those problems, whether it be changing a bulb, changing a seat cover, or putting a new sticker on that vehicle up to state standard.
We're more concerned, I think, as a board, with the materials that you're using, like motors and stuff. In other words, if it needed a motor, if you had a broken fan belt, would you fix the fan belt?
Yes, we could fix the fan belt.
So you have to have all these parts there?
Correct.
You change the oil, in other words, even if there's no problem, if the bus needs an oil change, do they just bring it over to you?
Correct, we, we, we would do, based on our maintenance schedules of each vehicle's, a vehicle might not get an oil change every time it comes in, but it would get an oil change at ten thousand miles or every year, depending on the type of engine that's in that vehicle. There's, there's several different engines that we deal with, whether it's gas, whether it's diesel, whether it's a big engine, whether it's a small engine. Based on the timeline of the use of that vehicle, we would determine whether or not that vehicle gets a wet service when it comes in for their quarterly inspection.
All right, thank you, and you're not gonna do any maintenance outside?
No, not, not unless there's something, it, it could be a bulb, but we may not bring in it inside to change a bulb. We might change a bulb, take five minutes outside.
Right, but you wouldn't change the oil outside or anything? Everything has to be inside?
Correct.
And the floor in that building, can you describe the floor? Do you have a drain in the floor?
I believe we do.
I don't know.
We haven't been in the building, so I...
If I may, I read in the prior resolution that there was to be no drains in the floor for this exact reason.
Yes.
If there's spills, and they talked about different elevation and lifts to contain anything that leaks on the floor, and you were party to that, Dr. Parker?
Yeah, I've been around too long. Okay.
We'll make sure it's a condition.
There's a, there's no drain on the floor, and you have maintenance for spills and training for your employees to do?
Yes.
To know what they're doing?
Okay.
And the oil, oil and everything is being shipped out on oily oil and brake fluid and everything? Hazard materials that are there are being shipped out to a contractor. They come and pick it up and take it out? You don't dispose of it on site, okay. I don't have any other questions at this moment, but I'll ask any of the board members if they have any questions. Everybody good?
Yep.
Hey, Dr. Parker, I'm a little confused by that question.
You can ask a question.
I'll let Diana do it. I'm a little confused. How often do state inspections take place on your site?
Uh, we could have the state inspectors there two to three days per month, servicing several different clients.
Okay, and basically doing a repair for school buses?
Correct.
That's basically your operation. So what happens when the school bus comes in and it's a nineteen-whatever, and they don't have seats on the east coast? Or do they take it off-site? How many vehicles are you gonna keep that haven't been able to be repaired same day in, same day out?
Well, school buses only have an effective life of fifteen years, so the older stuff, they timeout. You're not allowed to transport children once a vehicle gets...
Let's forget the older stuff. Let's stay with new stuff because supply chain stinks right now.
Um, yes, there, we would have to keep the vehicle on our facility until a part comes, but more likely than not, what we've been noticing is if we do the quarterly inspection, make our repair list, return the vehicle to the customer until the parts that we need come in, unless there's a serious safety problem, we'll order the parts, get the parts in, get that vehicle back, and fix the repairs.
And how many vehicles are you intending to have space for to store on-site awaiting parts?
I believe we have up to ten.
Overnight vehicles?
Up to ten.
Ten, two inside and outside.
That can be a limit.
Yep, twelve.
That can be a condition.
I, I wanna make, I wanna make sure, Dan, that everybody understands, because that gets to be a problem with whether it's a body shop or anything else. And this board, and Dave Simmons, and Dr., well, everybody could echo the fact that we just wanna make sure that it's under control, and all of a sudden, we don't have eighty-four buses because there's a computer chip missing. That's why I, yep, that's specifically why I asked those questions right at the beginning. I wanted to make sure that it was clear. My client knows that there are limits to that. And, you know, this site, he's basically picked this site because he services clients in Sussex and Morris County, and this is an appropriate location for this site. Not, we, we, even I got that part. Okay.
They said they fall under the fourteen disabled vehicle limit.
Exactly, exactly. Uh, just one more.
Okay. Are you finished, Glenn?
Uh, I did have one more question, I think.
Oh, we'll get back to you.
Okay, shut up, Glenn.
I've just got two, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Mr. Simmons?
One was, when the van comes from the state with the state inspectors, and you mentioned they bring their own equipment, do they bring their own equipment to test the exhaust? Or do you have a facility or some other subcontractor come and test the exhaust?
So the state has a machine that they would plug into the, to the exhaust pipe of a school vehicle to check the, the emissions of a school, of a school bus?
They bring it with them?
They bring it with them. It's a, it's a state, it's called a SNAP test. They, they have the, the box, so to speak, and the probe that they use themselves. They have it themselves.
The reason I mention that, I believe on the northerly side of the main building, that shed that used to be there, there used to be some exhaust testing, emissions testing equipment in that. And I, and you're not proposing that?
No, I, I was unaware of that.
That that was noted correctly as far as the equipment they had on site? The other question I had is just thinking out loud, and I don't know the answer to this.
Okay.
You know, with the advent towards electric buses and what have you, do you foresee some of your work in the future possibly being, working on those type of buses and having batteries on-site, et cetera, et cetera?
So currently, there is a trend to move towards electric vehicles. Let's just say that the training is not available to us yet to get our mechanics up to speed to service electric vehicles yet. But the, the manufacturers of the electric vehicles are having training within the next year for our mechanics to go to. But yes, we will, once the need, the school boards around us start getting electric vehicles and electric vehicles start needing the same inspections and standards that the gas and diesel vehicles, we will be servicing them.
One suggestion I was gonna make to the board is that if in fact you get involved with that, since you probably have several batteries on-site, I would think, in storage?
For electric vehicles?
Yes.
No. We would never have electric vehicle batteries on-site.
You would just get them as needed to replace?
The technology is so new that the batteries are twice the size of this desk for, for school buses.
Right.
Uh, we're not talking about regular car batteries. We're talking about electric school bus vehicle batteries. They weigh thousands of pounds and cost tens of thousands of dollars, so we would never purchase them. And any issues that we would have with regards to batteries would go directly back to the dealer. We would never service batteries. We, we would not be authorized to service batteries on electric vehicles.
Where I was going with this whole thing was, if in fact it came to that, where you're getting involved with that, it may be a good thing to have the local fire department be aware of how that's being handled and where any type of electrical equipment is?
Yes.
Just so they're aware of it, something new technology coming up. I just suggest that as a condition.
Brings up another point that I was thinking of, Dave. There's a new state law about new properties coming in. I don't know whether this qualifies or not, that they have to have on-site electric charges. Does this applicant fall under that at all?
I don't know.
I think that they might, and what I was gonna suggest, Dr. Parker, is that Mr. Dykstra just show someplace on revised plans as to where they could have two charging bays or something? That way, you don't have to come back in the future. I, I, I think Dr. Parker brings up a really good point. That's the way the business is going. You're seeing them all the time, you're seeing advertisements. We're, we're seeing it across the state, so just to show where you could fit...
Say two, is there a good calculation?
I'm telling you, if you're putting one in, you put one on one side, one on the other, so it's one, actually. It's like one, it's like one gas pump with two, with two nozzles.
True. Yeah, we'll make that revision, provide you with a plan.
And I'm, I'm not even suggesting that they necessarily need to put it in today, but why not show it on the plan so they don't have to come back in tomorrow?
That, that's exactly the way I understand the way the new law is written, that all new things have to have the, the charging stations on them. Existing properties can choose to have them on it. They don't need permits, but they have to come in for, for permission to do it, just so we have them on the plans. But that's was the basic concept that I received from, from the other board. Remember, we got that information on the planning board the month?
So I have, is that for employee cars?
Yes.
Or is that for...
For every, for everything.
Or is it for a bus?
No, it's not.
Yeah, it could be, it could be for a bus, too. It's all gonna be the same. It's all gonna be the same thing, Doug. It's all gonna be the same thing. A plug is a plug. My client has no problem with the amended plans, including charging stations for electric vehicles.
Okay.
That way, you're just picking out the location.
And there's no, there's no plans, and we're not gonna make a condition. There's no way you're gonna have gas station, a gas station on this in the sense that you're gonna have storage tanks where you're gonna fill up the things with either diesel or, or gasoline? Okay, I don't have any other questions. Anybody else on the board stimulated? I'm gonna close it to the board and open it up to the public. Does anybody in the public wish to be heard in this matter? Okay, I don't see a big rush, so we'll close it to the public and bring it back to the board. If the applicant doesn't have any questions for us, the chair will take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to have our board attorney prepare a resolution approving Application Twenty-two dash twenty-two, Block fourteen zero zero one, Lot forty-one, Two-Ninety North Church Road for Use Variants Site, Site Plan Approval, with the following conditions. Applicant accepts and adheres to all points in our Board of Engineer, Mr. Simmons, report. Easement agreement implemented prior to either ownership or lease change for that low riprap area adjacent to tax lot forty-two. No drain outlet in the main building. Spill hazardous material maintenance plan be provided, and also employee training on that plan. No outdoor storage of more than ten buses. No fuel station on-site of the, fueling the buses. Also, as needed, when needed, the electric batteries for the buses be provided and reviewed by our fire department. And revised plans show the charging station, station. And as build plans be also provided, a completion. And was that all the conditions, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, and testimony and...
Yeah, as all plans and testimony submitted here tonight.
Is there a second?
One second.
Under discussion, is there any discussion? Diana, call the roll, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, gentlemen, I'm going to call the next applicant, which is Rock Island Lake Club, but we're gonna take a five-minute break and give them a chance to set up.
Five friends in a team, you got, he goes into the applicant.
Yes.
And I see Larry Palmer.
Just for the record, you accept the fact that we only have six members here for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you've heard that you're gonna put your case on completely?
I, I don't think we're gonna get that far this evening. We have several witnesses. I note that the board's rules that there's a hard stop at ten o'clock. It's nine fifteen. I would hope to be able to at least get two witnesses in tonight and then come back some date in the not-too-distant future.
Okay, I cannot guarantee that anybody, you'll get another board member, but we will ask the board members to look at the discs, the tapes, and maybe one of them will, but we don't have any jurisdiction to demand that, okay? will, but we don't have any jurisdiction to demand that, okay? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay, for the record's purpose, my name is Stephen Sheppis, I'm the applicant's attorney. You may remember I was here back in twenty sixteen with the Rock Island Lake Club, that we're here on a site plan application back then. Uh, we're here tonight seeking further amendments to the approved site plan. Uh, the facility is commonly known as the Rock Island Lake Club. It is a longstanding catering facility, it's located at four eighty-five Glen Road, Sparta. In the twenty sixteen application to board, as well as the two thousand, I think the two thousand and one application recognized that it's a lawful pre-existing non-conforming use in the RR zone. And we're proposing some modest modifications to the site. Seated to my right is Matthew Smithana, Mr. Smithana is a licensed professional architect. He prepared the plans that are subject to tonight's hearing, so I'd like to have him sworn, and then he can describe for the board and the public the nature of the building modifications.
Okay, Matt, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth in respect to this matter?
I do.
Okay, and you've been in front of this board many times, is your license still valid?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Parker, can we have him spell his name and stuff?
Sure.
M A T T?
I, I couldn't even hear it.
It's you, Gary. Uh, Smithana, S as in Sam, M E T A as in N A N C A. So S M E T A N A.
Thanks, man.
All right, Mr. Smithana, I've introduced you as the project architect. Were you involved with the Rock Island Lake Club in the twenty sixteen application?
Yes, I was.
Okay, and we're here tonight for some modifications to the building and the site?
Correct, yes.
So why don't you briefly tell us what proposed changes there are? Perhaps you could walk us through the plans and describe the modifications.
Um, operationally, most of the roof is the building, so some in the front, some on the right side, and some at the rear. The purposes behind a lot of the work is basically, after having operated in the business for many years, certain things about the way things are functioning, basically need improvement, some of things including more circulation, I mean, more storage space.
Excuse me a second, Matt. Diana, can you hear him? Are you picking him up? He's quite away from the mic.
Sure. So operationally, some of their current needs are, they need additional storage space, um, they need some exterior covered areas so that, um, based on the recent COVID, as well as also operationally, they do have wedding service, services outside. Should it rain, they basically need a protected area where they could, at the last minute, you know, make an adjustment, have a space that basically they could perform those ceremonies and still a protected area, still with the lake views. And then, functionally, some of the locations of different pieces of the program, the bathroom area, they prefer it to be a little further away from the dining area so that when you open the door from the bathroom, you aren't looking right into the bathroom area, uh, to the dining area or the banquet area. So functionally, basically what we have done is, I'll start at the back, there's an existing exterior covered area on the back, a covered terrace, or a terrace for the main, the lower level of the building. We're proposing to, at the banquet level, put a roof over the top of that section. That would serve as the area for, you know, possible wedding ceremonies when they need to, due to the weather. Off to the right side, we're then tying over with another porch covered area here, basically, and a stair going down so we can provide better egress from any functions at the banquet level, should the front entryway or another one of the exits be blocked due to a, you know, fire or something like that, we're basically providing better egress off from the, up the, I call it the main level, um, and the lower level being the, um, the level below it. There is also an upper floor, um, which is just for the bridal suite and some office space. So functionally, we are adding a porch off to the right side, so those two porches link to one another with a stair. That ties in back into, what we've done is basically taken the existing bathroom area and we're converting that to storage area so that when they're, depending on the size of the banquet, they may need a few tables taken away, so it's much easier for them to utilize this space here, adjacent to the banquet areas, in order to store a few tables, um, chairs, things like that, um, depending on who the client is at the time. So in making all of that area storage, we basically now need an area for the bathrooms for the banquet level. So we've added a men's and women's room off to the right end of the building, um, as well as one of the operational, um, functions that they provide for weddings is, they like to have, when guests leave at the end of the night, they serve pizzas, um, basically taking on the, taking in the car on the ride home. So we have enclosed at the front, oh, a porch along the entire main front of the building so that there's a covered, protected space while you're waiting for your car or the bus to pick you up, and it's also an area where the pizza can basically be served or whatever else might be served at the end before the parties leave site. Down to the lower level, uh, along the right side, the area that we have now as a covered porch on the main level becomes a covered porch for the lower level, um, again, giving a little bit of flexibility for, you know, any pandemic-type situations, um, to give a little bit more outdoor area, so if need be, it's, it's available. And then underneath the bathroom area that we were doing on the main level is a two-car garage plus a half-car, two-and-a-half-car garage for vehicle storage down there. And then we have, uh, basically relocated the women's room to be underneath, um, part of the, where the pizza oven is and all, as well as some wine storage, because they're limited on the amount of storage space that they have currently right now. Um, and what we've basically done is taken the women's room that's existing on the lower level, converted that to the men's room, and then converted the men's room, which was very small, to a unisex bathroom with a shower, so functionally for guests, it's kind of like an all-day, uh, a daily experience, they might need a shower before the actual wed- wedding ceremony, so it's basically just the ability to have that flexibility. All total, the footprint of the building being added, including the stairs, the uncovered deck at the corner, um, is a total of one thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine square feet. Most of that is over the top of existing impervious areas, um, with the exception of the bathroom area, this wing at the end, and then a little bit of this corner here, but the rest of it is primarily over existing. There's a sidewalk along the front here, as well as parking and all along the right side, and sidewalk on the right side.
Mr. Smithana, could you just touch on the exterior materials that are proposed with the garden and the modifications? Tell us what plan sheet you're referring to.
So this is sheet AE one. Uh, so we're gonna be in keeping in with the existing palette of materials that are currently there. Primarily, all the porches are going to be heavy timber with brackets, um, and beams. The, they're gonna have a standing seam metal roof over the top. We are keeping the same railing system that's currently there on the building and continuing to wrap that around to the side. Uh, and siding-wise, some vertical and natural materials, um, again, keeping the same color palette that's currently used on the building now. That should cover all the materials, and then a couple doors here.
You're melding in the new materials with the existing?
Correct, yes.
They'll all match?
Yes.
And you're putting the front porch on the front for a covered entrance, and right now there is no covered entrance out there to set?
Uh, there's a small, just over the door area, covered area, which is extremely limited, so basically, uh, this would provide a much better waiting area for, uh, guests as they're waiting for the car to basically brought to them or the bus.
Okay, I don't have anything further, Mr. Smithana.
Okay, um, just following our procedures, you have any other witnesses?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you bring them up and we'll, because I'd like you to put your whole case forward, and then we're gonna go through the procedures. You heard what I was saying before, okay?
Okay, do I get?
Sure, whatever you have, go ahead, bring them up.
Okay. Maybe these are rails, we got these, like four of them.
We'll bring up all four, I'll swear them all in, and then as each one talks, we'll bring them over to the, to the mic, okay?
Okay, well, uh, the, the witness of our, David Gary is the project engineer. Jill Lu, she's the manager, and, uh, I guess it'd be a call.
I, I understand, I have the same problem. That's why name tags were invented.
I'm gonna change the sign on the office.
I don't know.
So, so Jessica Caldwell, project.
Would you please all raise your right hands? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth in respect to this matter?
Yes.
Okay, um, Matt, would you just hand them the microphone, and then they can talk right into it?
Okay, so our next witness.
Would, no, I would, please, would you just state your name, your address, and your, your title to this application, and spell your last name for the secretary, please?
Jessica Caldwell, C A L D W E L L. I'm the planner for the applicant, uh, one forty-five Spring Street Suite E in Newton, New Jersey.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Gillian, J I L L I A N Leach, L E E C H. I'm the major D manager, and my address is eighty-one White Rock Boulevard, Oak Ridge.
Thank you.
My name is David E. Garion, E G A R I A N. I'm the president of DJ E. Garion and Associates, two seventy-one Route Forty-six in Fairfield. I'm the civil engineer on the project.
Okay, sir, have you been in front of this board before?
I have, yes.
Okay, and I just, if you just excuse me, I can't, I don't remember, when was the last time you were here?
Twenty sixteen, in the last application.
The same thing, okay.
Yes.
My mind is going, okay. Is your license still valid in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And you were qualified at that time to be an engineer?
Yes.
Okay, we'll accept your qualifications then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who's going to?
Ms. Leach, so Ms. Leach is gonna testify as to some operational issues in conjunction with the proposed modifications. So, uh, Ms. Leach, why don't you come on up, and you heard, you were here during the testimony of Mr. Smithana, the project architect, right? So let's talk about first what you do at the Rock Island Lake Club. You, you noted that you were the manager, so why don't you tell us what your duties entail?
Um, I'm the major D manager, um, so my duties are dealing with the client of the night, the bride and groom, um, along with my floor staff and any vendors that are there. Um, I work alongside everyone to make sure that everything is running smoothly throughout the night.
And how many years have you been employed at the Rock Island Lake Club?
Two years.
Now, let's talk about what's proposed here this evening in the way of the proposed roof over the deck. Now, why don't you tell the members of the board and the public how that would be a benefit to the facility and how it impacts the ability of people to have their ceremonies?
Um, so we do mainly, our ceremonies are outside with the lake in the background. Uh, that's mainly why a lot of the people choose us, is for the scenery, um, but there are times when it does rain, and we don't have cover for those ceremonies, um, and we have been told a few times that we have ruined the bride's day, um, because we've had to move the ceremony inside.
So let's talk about the ceremony. When you say the ceremony, is that the actual ceremony where the people are married?
Yes.
Some minister is there or some other officiator?
Yes.
So what does that usually entail? Is it people standing around, is there chairs, is there portico, is there some type of pergola? What is it?
It's, um, just on the grass, and we set up chairs for them with a small arch.
Is there any band playing at that time, or is it just background music?
Um, mainly background music or a three-piece ceremony, a three-piece string.
Okay, so where do these usually occur when the weather is, is clear?
Uh, when it's clear, we're on the grass.
And is that adjacent to the lake?
Yes.
Okay. Now, how is it that this covered roof would assist in these ceremonies in inclement weather?
Um, so instead of doing it in the ballroom where we have to move all of the tables and chairs and pipe and drape, we could just simply do it on the covered deck where they're still getting the background of the lake.
Okay, so let's take the example, uh, it's a ceremony planned for outside and you get a rainy day.
Mm-hmm.
Now, without the roof over the deck, how would you accommodate that, knowing that the bride doesn't want to stand there in the rain and exchange her vows?
Uh, when we know that there's inclement weather, um, we do tend to watch it. We have a window of maybe an hour before that we give them to make the decision to go inside. Uh, sometimes we cut it short as thirty minutes before, but that's not a lot of time to reset the entire room and get ready for the ceremony and shuffle the guests.
So you're talking about the main ballroom, is that fair to say?
Yes.
So would it be fair to characterize it that you have to like move the tables out of one half of the room?
Yes, we completely move everything from one side to the other, um, and sometimes there's extravagant centerpieces, and it makes it more difficult to do that.
Excuse me, um, we can take judicial notice of the fact that a covered system back here is, is a positive from your business point of view, okay?
Very good.
You can move on from that, okay?
Very good, I will. Could you also just talk about how these other modifications would, would propose, especially the garage? Tell the board what about the garage?
Um, the garage would give us a place to put our two electric vehicles that we have, along with the Kubota. Right now, we have no outside covering for them, and there's nowhere for them to be from the inclement weather, so right now they sit outside in the rain and the snow, and it causes damage to the vehicles.
So tell the board and the public what these electric vehicles are used for.
Yep, um, the jam and the milk we use to transport the bride and groom, um, so that she's not walking down the road, we let her drive, well, we drive her in the car to take pictures around our area, along with if there's any elderly guests who cannot walk down our ramp, we transport them from the ceremony site back to the cocktail hour.
Okay, so right now, these vehicles stay out overnight in, in inclement weather, and now you're proposing them to be inside a garage in this proposed addition, is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay, now let's talk about the additional storage. Mr. Smithana had mentioned that he's proposing some storage area and relocating the bathrooms. Could you just briefly touch on that?
Yeah, um, the bathrooms are located right outside of the ballroom, and we do have tables that face the men's room in particular, um, and the going in and out of the restrooms, you can see right into the bathrooms, along with during dinner service, we are walking down the hall with the food and passing by.
Okay, so.
We can take that as a judicial notice, that the, the internal stuff that Mr. Smithana talked about, we can understand that. We understand the reason for it, okay? Unless the board has, anybody on the board has a specific question on that. Okay, keep going, because there's important questions that I want to get to.
Our next witness is David E. Garion, Mr. E. Garion is the project engineer. He was previously sworn and gave his credentials, so Mr. E. Garion, why don't you come on up? Why don't you put your board up on the easel and tell us what we were looking at in the way of the site, where these proposed modifications are to occur, and how it is that you can accommodate them from a site plan aspect?
Do any of these need to be marked?
I don't believe so, these are just plan sets that are.
Have you doctored any of them, or changed any? They're all the same as that we have?
What did you docter?
I put a yellow patch over the additions.
Okay, well, mark that one eight one and make sure that that's turned into the planning department, please.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. E. Garion, you've previously been sworn, likewise you place your credentials on the record. Let's talk about the site plan, is it based on a current survey?
Uh, yeah, yes, it is. During the review process with the Sussex County Planning Board, the, there was quite a bit of back and forth with the right-of-way and the edge of pavement and the site triangle, which led to, um, a couple of upgrades and amendments to the, to the survey itself. So this plan does reflect the latest of survey.
Now, initially, when the plan was submitted to the board over a year and a half ago, you were proposing some additional parking along the right-of-way, is that fair to say?
Yes, we, we were. Yes, we, we were.
And that has been eliminated at the request of the county?
Yes, the county essentially wanted everything taken out of the site triangle. So everything was moved out of the site triangle, including parking, lighting, landscaping, and so on. And the project, the, um, Rock Island sign has been moved to a location down here. The only item that's left within the site triangle is the existing well.
And that was permitted to remain by the county?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so let's talk about the improvements that Mr. Smith Tanna talked about. Maybe you can point to it on the site plan. You can describe for the board and the public where these improvements are and how they impact the site, if at all.
Yes, well, we have a 400, uh, as far as footprint goes, a 485 square foot building addition. It's two stories located here. The upper story is for relocated bathrooms and the bottom story is, is for two parking spaces designated 36 and 37.
Uh, so, Mr. E. Garion, you've, you testified earlier that you marked this plan up, you made something yellow. So why don't you identify this plan by the title block and then call it A1 and the date of most recent revision?
Uh, the title block says existing conditions, building additions, parking lot modifications, Rock Island Lake Club. It's, um, exhibit A dash one, amended through October 17, 2022.
And what's the significance of that yellow area that you show there?
It depicts the actual location of the, of the building addition.
Okay, so as you're looking at the building, it would be on the right-hand front corner?
Yes, standing in the front, it's an extension off the, the right corner of the building.
Now, Mr. Smith Tanna had testified about a front porch covered entrance. Where is that on the site plan?
That would be the hatched area here.
Okay, is that area presently, uh, impervious, or is there a walkway there? What's there now?
There's a walkway there now, and we're simply covering the walkway.
Okay, now, Mr. Smith Tanna also testified about the roof over the rear deck and then likewise, some additional stairs that came off. Can you indicate for the board and the public where those improvements are proposed?
Yes, there's, there is a, a covered, a roof over the existing rear deck. There is an extension, a deck extension that wraps around the building that, as Mr. Smith Tanna says, affords better egress from the rear of the building to the front parking lot. We have stairs now that run down from that building extension. A new small lawn area. We reworked the paver, the pavers, and we reworked this area here for a new sidewalk and, and landscaping.
Now, um, Ms. Leech testified about a garage, as did Mr. Smith Tanna. Where is this garage? Where's the entrance to the garage? And how does one access the garage?
It's, it's two spaces below the second floor bathrooms. They're accessed through garage doors facing the paver area at the rear lower entrance to the facility, and they're accessed through the parking lot and into the, uh, exist, into the proposed garage.
So it's a garage under?
Yes.
Okay, and the doors face towards the back of the building?
They face towards the lake.
Oh, towards the lake. Okay, now, have you done an analysis as to impervious coverage, what exists today and what's being proposed, should the board approve the application?
Yes. That's shown on drawing number one, which is the cover sheet, and that's amended through September 9th, 2022. And basically, we, we show the impervious coverage in the zoning table, and we also have a Highlands compliance analysis, which, which is important. Um, our lot coverage is now 42.72 percent, and that is made up of 52,0055 square feet, which was approved back in 2016. Then we have, in this application, a net increase in impervious of 518 square feet, which includes the building addition, the additional pavement, an additional patio, and subtracting off the pervious area of the new lawn. So that's a net addition of 518 square feet, which leaves us with a total coverage or a footprint of 52,0573 square feet.
All right, so, Mr. E. Garion, the ordinance permits 18 percent coverage in the RR zone, and we're proposing 42.72. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that represents a square foot increase of 518 square feet of additional coverage?
That's correct.
Okay, now, we're also asking for a variance with regard to front yard setback. The zoning ordinance requires minimum front yard setback of 75 feet, and I believe right now you're at 74.48, and you're proposing 69.1. Is that correct?
69.1.
Okay, where does that deviation exist at 69.1?
It's the offset from the right-of-way line to the building corner.
Okay, so it's based upon the proposed covered entrance way?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, I might wanna add, as far as the impervious coverage calculation goes, for the Highlands compliance analysis, we're allowed 125 percent increase in footprint, and we actually have a net reduction of 13 percent compared to the 2004 statutory, uh, beginning of time limit.
Okay, now, Mr. E. Garion, as relates to onsite parking, how many parking spaces are you proposing?
We're proposing 58.
And how many are required by ordinance?
Yeah, 48. No, yeah, 48. And we have one additional space from the existing condition in this application.
Does that include the garage?
Yes.
So let's talk about one of the conditions that the board imposed in their, uh, March 23rd, 2016 resolution of approval. Uh, condition number eight required that the applicant apply and secure a permit from the NJDEP Dam Safety for the parking of vehicles on, quote unquote, "the dam." And, uh, since that time, have you made effort to secure such a permit from the department?
Yes, I contacted DEP in, in that matter.
And what was the results of this contact or your investigation?
Well, Mr. Simmons had recommended that I contact Ms. Sarah Hatawa of Dam Safety, and I called her. Amazingly, I got through to her, but I did call her, and she is the professional for DEP in charge of Rock Island, and she's very familiar with the dam. And she indicated to me that at this point in time, that DEP has no issue or no problem with, uh, Rock Island parking on the dam.
All right, did she also indicate whether such a permit was available? Was there any permitting available?
She indicated that there was no permit available.
Okay, so it's not like you just didn't apply. There's no mechanism to secure such a permit?
That's my understanding, yes.
All right, so just so everybody's clear, can you point where the dam is in relationship to the lake and to the property?
Well, the dam extends approximately from this area to the spillway about, about this area in here. Here's the shoreline. So this, this area is the top of the Earthen Dam, and these are the spaces, space 39 through 58.
Okay, is it fair to say too that the driveway that traverses our property serves as the sole means of access for these residences that are also located on Edelweiss Lane?
That's correct.
They pass through here?
Ingress of Glen Road through Rock Island, over the dam and to the rear.
Okay. All right, uh, I don't have anything further, Mr. E. Garion, and I know there was some memo, uh, or a memo from, uh, Mr. Simmons. Maybe we could address Mr. Simmons' concerns, and then, of course, the board's concerns and public.
Okay, we can have Mr. Simmons go through it. Um, he's aware of our bank concern. Uh, I'll just ask a couple, one question here. We're not increasing the amount of people that the building can hold?
No, not.
Okay, so we're still at 144?
Correct.
And we're still talking about the same amount of parking. We've discussed the dam back in 16. Um, we have some new points on this, and I have a question when Mr. Simmons is finished. Go ahead, Mr. Simmons.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Uh, the latest report I did on the application was dated November 2nd, 2022. Uh, on the first two pages, I basically outlined everything that Mr. Smith Tanna was describing as far as the improvements to the, the existing building. And I'll get to it in a minute. There was also a request for elimination of conditions number five and number eight of the zoning board's March 26th, 2016 resolution, which we'll talk about in a minute. Uh, then we go into the documentation that was submitted. Uh, and I will point out that in my report, just so it's correct for the record, uh, there was a revised plan in particular sheet number two that Mr. E. Garion did last revise, October 17th, 2022, which wasn't part of the package I got, so it's not reflected in this report. I just note that for the record. Uh, we talked about the expansion of the, uh, existing non-conforming use, and we also, as they just went over the various variances as a result of the improvements they're talking about, including the impervious coverage. The one item I just wanna make sure of, there were various iterations that went forward on this application over the last couple of years with the pandemic and everything else. But in the one application, there was a call for the impervious coverage of 46.31 percent. My assumption is that's no longer being requested, so I was gonna cancel that out.
Yes.
Okay. With regards to the site plan, uh, as Mr. Garion pointed out, I know from the original report and original plan that I received, uh, the county did have several comments and wanted several items removed out of the county right-of-way and/or site triangle easement, including the signs, some parking spaces and what have you. And I know the board, uh, waited to get the comments from the county, 'cause that was going to affect what the board was actually gonna look at as part of the current application. With regards to the dam, uh, Mr. E. Garion and I did speak, and I did, uh, recommend that he contact Ms. Sarah Hatawa, a licensed professional engineer at the Bureau of Dam Safety, and he did receive information from Ms. Hatawa that, in fact, a permit was not required, and as I understand it, did not have any objection to the parking that's shown on the site plan, in particular sheet number two, that's part of this package. Not that I didn't believe Mr. E. Garion, but I assumed that the board would want something in writing to that effect. So given the fact that the hearing was coming up, I did call Ms. Hatawa, and I explained to her what was going on, and she requested, she said she would give us a response in writing through an email, but in order to initiate that email response, she wanted an email from me requesting it. So I did send that, and she did respond to what we just discussed with Mr. E. Garion and what I just explained to the board, and that's how the attachment to this report came about, just so the board had it for your record from the Bureau of Dam Safety. I also received, and it's not noted in here because it came subsequent to this report, I did, uh, receive a copy of the latest dam inspection report by another consultant. I don't recall his name.
That's in my file.
If Mr. Garion can look that up, just to have it as part of the record. Uh, the latest inspection report of the dam itself, it was listed in, quote unquote, "poor" condition.
I have it, Mr. Simmons.
Yes, sir.
Mohammed Kabir, Ph.D., P.E.
Okay, so it was inspected. So when I say in poor condition, the, the DEP Dam Safety section basically has, uh, satisfactory, poor, a couple other categories. But it was poor, uh, my understanding, because the existing, uh, overflow outlet structure was not sufficient to handle the storm, uh, capacity for what this dam is rated. It's not saying that it was in poor shape, imminent collapse, but it hydraulically couldn't handle the flow. So that's, I believe that's correct, right, Mr. Garion?
That's correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to give the board the benefit of where the applicant had been on the issues of the dam. Uh, the other item was, if you recall, from around 2016, uh, when we looked at this application before, uh, there is an existing easement that is in place to get the homeowners on the, I guess it would be the east side of the lake from Glen Road over to their homes, but the physical traveled way doesn't necessarily always coincide with that existing easement. So there was a request and a requirement in the last resolution that the applicant revise that easement and make it more or less follow, well, more, follow the existing traveled way and bring that all the way out to where the existing entrance is, out onto Glen Road, the county road, so that someone technically going from their home on the east side of Rock Island Lake to Glen Road were within the limits of the easement. Uh, I don't believe, unless I'm missing something, I don't believe all that has been done yet. There's some areas where the existing easement that's in place doesn't necessarily follow where the vehicles and the pedestrians will have to travel to get to Glen Road. So I believe that's still an outstanding condition. I also point out, just for the members of the board, and I know the chairman knows this, uh, on the westerly side, next to, uh, the adjacent property to the left, as you're standing in Glen Road looking at the subject property, there is a small triangular area that, again, goes off these applicant's property onto the adjacent lot that's not covered by that easement. We happen to have that particular property owner, the Allens, in for a subdivision in front of the planning board. They were subdividing a piece off their neighbors and annexing it to their lot. At that time, I made this recommendation that they grant the Rock Island Lake Club and the appropriate people of the easement, uh, that exist right now, that additional triangular area, so that that was covered too, and just not an encroachment on the adjacent lot. Uh, I happened to review that deed this afternoon. Uh, so that's in progress, just to complete that piece of the puzzle. I believe the, Mr. Beckendorf, uh, was the attorney for that applicant, and I believe he was in touch with the applicant's attorney to coordinate and work on that. So that's in progress.
Okay.
And that was the item 3C. We talked about the 144 seats. My, it's my understanding from, uh, back in the day, back in 2016, when Mr. Quinn was the board attorney, there was a lot of discussion about that, and my understanding is that was the, uh, limit on the number of seats that were allowed based on the septic system capacity and other factors that were discussed at that time. Uh, we talked about the dam parking. With regards to storm drainage, the township, in addition to DEP regulations, the township passed an ordinance number 21 dash 02 that basically says if you disturb and add more than 500 square feet of impervious, then you have to provide some storm water mitigation. I believe there was some discussion a few minutes ago. It was 518 square feet, something to that effect. So what Mr. E. Garion has proposed is a dry well up in the front of the site, subject to, uh, confirming that the soils are acceptable with soil log in that area, so they can mitigate that storm drainage runoff, 'cause we've had all the applicants do. So that's under play. Uh, they're not proposing any additional lighting. Uh, the additions that Mr. Smith Tanna talked about, uh, were basically at or less, more or less, less than what the existing building height is now, so that didn't become an issue. And my understanding is that there's no additional seats being added as far as the capacity goes. Uh, they are providing some landscaping around, uh, parking spaces 15 to 18, as shown on the site plan. I just requested a list of the materials, so when the inspector goes out there to check to make sure everything's done, he knows what he's supposed to be checking out and what's there. With regards to the sanitary sewer and the water, uh, again, they've got the well that's right along Glen Road, and with regards to the septic system, just to get confirmation from the county health department that everything's still satisfactory for them. Uh, the sign, as Mr. E. Garion said, is gonna be located, relocated, I should say, outside of the site triangle easement. Uh, there wasn't an environmental impact statement provided. Uh, perhaps Mr. E. Garion can comment on the wetlands, just for the record?
Uh, there are no wetlands on the, on the site.
Okay, so you're, you're looking at that as an open body of water, the lake?
That's right.
Okay.
Are we also talking about the storm drain? Um, the dry well is also gonna be mitigating the runoff?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and speaking of the dry well under construction details, and this is why I wanted to point out that this report was written before I received the latest, uh, set of plans. Uh, I had asked for a detail on the access manhole for the dry well with , uh, H20 loading, which would be a, a large vehicle, and that has been provided on sheet three of the latest plan, uh, that Mr. E. Garion submitted. Uh, I had a comment there for Mr. Keans to comment. Any call applications for this? I'm not sure if that's just left as per whatever the law requires?
I think so, David.
Okay. Then number 13, as far as the various approvals, everything from county health department, the planning board, because it's on a county road, and the various township agencies, and DEP, as we discussed tonight in the Highlands, and finally, an as book to be prepared once it's completed. And that's my update on this application, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Um, if I read the, uh, memo correctly from the state, uh, they don't have, require a permit or anything like that, but they did recommend that the applicant have an engineer test the dam on a certain basis. Is that correct?
There's, there's supposed to be, this, if I remember the report that Mr. E. Garion mentioned, the other consulting engineer did the inspection on, this was classified as a class two dam.
Mm-hmm.
Which basically, uh, class one is the highest, class two is next down. Class one means if there's a failure, there's a probable loss, god forbid of life. Class two means if there's a failure, there's a probable loss of material or damage to downstream structures. So basically, they have to adhere to the inspection schedule that the DEP Dam Safety Section. Section requires, and they also mentioned in their email that they sent back to me was that while they didn't object to the parking on the dam as shown on the site plan, they asked that the applicant's engineer basically provide verification that in fact, parking on the dam doesn't cause any damage to the dam or increase the probability of any kind of failure. Maybe Mr. Agarian could comment on that.
I noticed that that was a requirement in the, in one of the, one of the reports, oh, from Ms. Hatawa.
Yes.
That there was a report to, I think, by, by the end of the year, and I understand that the engineer, the engineer is working on that.
So, that's in progress.
Okay, now, would it be appropriate to have a condition that that, that person inspected dam yearly, two, every, bi-yearly, or whatever?
Normally, normally, there's, in the dam inspection schedules, there's what they call an informal, a regular inspection, and a formal inspection, and those are set up on a schedule. They alternate year to year whether it's an informal or a formal or a regular inspection. And what I would recommend is that if the board was to approve the application, that the dam be inspected in accordance with the DEP inspection interval requirements.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Glenn, do you have any comments to make?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would just make one comment with regard to the condition number five as related to the easement. Back in 2016, shortly after the approval, in accord with the condition of the resolution, I prepared a modified easement agreement that was reviewed by the board's attorney at the time, Mr. Quinn. He approved it. We conducted title searches into every one of the properties that use this road, and we forwarded the document to each one of the property owners with the request that they execute amended easement. There is previously an executed association agreement. I included it as an attachment on the application. The property was part of a subdivision in nineteen eighty-three, and at the time, the developer, Mr. Franz Montaigne, and another Carl Arons, apparently joined efforts and got a subdivision, and they entered into an agreement, and they, everybody signed it, so we were looking to amend that, and nobody responded. So, on the second attempt, I sent it out again, nobody responded, and Perry, who's a member of the association because he's part of the ownership, approached people, and they basically weren't interested in signing it. So, I don't know what we can do other than to ask the board to relieve us from that condition, because if I can't get the people to agree to modify the location of the easement, you know, it's, it leaves us in a lurch. Now, look, everybody's coming in and going out, there's no issues, and certainly, we could accept as a condition that the applicant maintain viable access or permit viable access through the existing traveled ways. We could accept that as a condition so that the board can rest assured that nobody's putting up a roadblock to prevent people from getting, that will maintain the access as it does today. It's Perry's access to the parking on the dam, and it's, it's in his best interest to maintain it clear, and he does a nice job. It's paved, it's smooth, and I'm sure when the neighbors come up, they'll all testify that they're in and out, and nobody gives them a hard time. So, we can certainly accept that as a condition, that we maintain that as open and viable and for emergency access and for the residents.
Okay, I'm just going to ask the board, it's ten o'clock. We should finish this roughly in a couple more minutes. Is everybody acceptable to just finish it and knock it off? Or do you, because I'll, I'll stop it now if anybody wants to, to go, because that's our rules. Okay, we're going. We'll just continue, okay, just for a short period of time. Do you, what he was just saying, is there a way to do this, that you can put it in the resolution?
I think so. Let me, I'll pick the days, because Dave's got the history of it.
Yes.
Necessary, I'll find the ever elusive, Mr. Quinn.
Okay. No, I mean, if-
Yeah, I, I think there's a way to do it.
Okay, just sort of fact that, and if they don't do it, at least they have, the applicant has to keep it open, has to keep it free, has to maintain it, okay?
It needs it for his parking anyway, so that becomes the condition that-
Well, there's, there's another question I have about parking before I open it up to the public. Last time I was there, going along the dam, on the left-hand side, I'm going up Idyll Heights, you have that nice parking area with the fence and the lights, and then around the back, you can go in and there's more parking in the back there, but I don't see, yeah.
Oh, back here.
Yeah.
And that's all been taken out.
You're not going to use that anymore?
No.
Whose property is that?
It was owned by the DEP, and we got a note from the DEP, and it was since removed.
Okay, because I saw cars parked back there, and I was just curious about it.
That's been cut off in-
Recently.
Yeah, I was only up there last weekend, so I was just curious. Okay, so that's part of, you understand that that's got to be closed?
No off-site park.
Okay, and you still have the parking that you have? Okay, thank you, I just wanted to clear that up. I'm going to close it to the board now and open it up to the public.
Dr. Parker, I just want to remind you, they still have planning testimony to be due to now.
I thought the planner was finished.
Well, she's here.
Oh. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I-
We only established for the last name, Mike.
Yeah, well, it took, it took a while, too.
I struggled with that one.
All right, would you like to come up and give your testimony? And you understand that we have gone through this before?
You don't have to start with Section One of the MOU, Al.
We go through South Beach.
It's not part of Jess's wheelhouse.
I'm sorry, I forgot your last name.
You go to get it.
That's all right.
I was concentrated on Jill Leach.
Too much talk about, yeah.
So, Mrs. Caldwell, if you would please briefly state your credentials on the record.
She's qualified.
Okay, you're qualified as a licensed professional planner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Please just give us your planning information.
Both names.
Yes, I understand, we kind of want the average version, so I'll work on that. So, I just want to highlight a few of the things I think are important about this particular application. The proposal is to improve circulation on the site, improve the visual appearance, improve operations of the facility, and create better safety for pedestrians as there's a walkway coming down from where pedestrians get off the bus, there's a proposed walkway to get down to where the entrance of the facility is, as well as an exit staircase from the upper deck, so that if there ever was, God forbid, a fire or some, there's another way for people to get out of the building. So, there, I, I think those items are, are things that are positives that I wanted to highlight just at the onset of my testimony. So, the big variance that we have is a D-two expansion of a non-conforming use variance, which the board has granted in the past, but we are expanding and changing again, ever be it so slightly, the footprint of the building and, and making some changes operationally, as you've heard. So, the main case on this is Burbidge v. Minehill, which really is sad that if there's visual improvements, if you're making improvements to the site, that can be found to meet Purpose A, the general welfare, the positive criteria. So, obviously, we're making visual improvements to the site, the architecture, but another reason I think we meet Purpose A is because we're, we're implementing safety measures, improving circulation, and improving operations of the site, all of those things, I think, also serve the general welfare. I also believe that we're meeting Purpose G, which is to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses. This is, you know, kind of a unique use that requires, you know, a big part of what they promote is, is the visual aspect of the lake and the scenery. It's really a unique location that's existed on the property since nineteen fifty-five, and allowing this facility to continue and grow and adapt with demands and provide for high-quality service is, is appropriate and provides us the space for that use in, in this location, which is well-served by this use. Also, Purpose M, to encourage coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land toward lessening the cost of such development and to more efficient use of land. This is a pre-existing non-conforming use, so really allowing this facility to adapt is a more efficient use and create more efficient use of the building, more efficient use of space, and more efficient use of land on the site, and lessening the costs in terms of having to go out and create a new facility rather than be able to utilize and, and create this facility in a more efficient fashion. The changes that we're proposing on the negative criteria side, as you've heard, we're not expanding the size of the building from an impact of, you know, allowing more seats or more visitors. We're still sticking to the same number of people, we still have adequate parking for the site, it's just better functionality of the overall use, so there's not going to be any changes of impacts to surrounding properties, you know, it's really going to function the same, just be better on the site itself, which conceivably would be better for the area, but it shouldn't have any greater impact than, than what it has today. And with respect to the zone plan and the master plan, and this is a longstanding use, and it's been on the property for quite some time, there are prior approvals on the site, and I, I think because of this unique situation, there's no substantial impact to the zone plan or the ordinances. We have two bulk variances that we're requesting, the reduced front yard setback and the site increase, albeit less than one percent, to impervious coverage. We put those under the C-two, well, the impervious coverage under the C-two criteria, and I guess the, the front yard setback as well. And the front yard setback's really to cover the existing walkway, just to provide, cover when a lot of people get picked up by buses and, and whatnot when, when they come to events like this. So, it doesn't really change the impact of, of the building or, you know, bring it incredibly close to the road, it's still sixty-nine point one feet where seventy-five feet is required, but it does provide for better circulation and a better pickup location on the site. Purpose H is to promote the free flow of traffic and efficient use of the land under Purpose M. I think both are served for the front yard setback and for the increase in impervious coverage, and I would also say that in terms of, of the negative impacts, it's still a very de minimis increase in the impervious coverage, and the increase in the front yard setback is not substantial, so I think it would be noticed by the public, and it provides for that better pickup and drop-off location. I think under the negative criteria, it's really essentially the same overall, and same with the zone plan and the master plan, so that's my average version.
Thank you.
But I can get into any more details that the board would like to dive into.
The board members have any questions, sir?
I have a few, may not directly obtain. The duration of the construction activities, what was the time, how many months to do the construction and upgrades?
I think that's best answered by Perry, the, you know, the owner, so maybe Perry can quickly be sworn and then just be able to answer that question. Perry, why don't you come up to the rail, and maybe it can be sworn, and then you can answer.
Could you bring a microphone over for him, please?
Okay.
Or he can come into the microphone, whichever is easiest.
Perry Bonadie's, Perry P.E.R.O.Y., Bonadie's B.O.N.A.D.I.E.S.
Would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you?
I do.
Thank you.
And Perry, just so everybody's clear, you're the owner of this facility, is that right?
Uh, yes, that's my wife.
So, there was a question, yeah, don't forget, Miss-
I know.
Otherwise, it'll be a rough ride home, Perry. So, why don't you just, the question that was posed by-
We have a number of weddings since, you know, the pandemic, we, we're pretty much open twelve months a year, but our slow month is January and February, so we're probably going to be two to three months, but it has to be kind of in between weddings, so when we do things, we have to do really quick because we have a very small window of when we could build, you know, the facility without brides being upset.
The reason why I'm asking that is the, the surrounding neighbor, the neighbors, during the construction period, making sure it's done within-
Well, it has to be done, it has to be done when we don't have our prime season, which is January and February. After that, we're booked solid. When I say booked solid, it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
And then the ingress of, of the supplies coming in, the building supplies and all that, that's a hell of a curve over there, getting some type of traffic-
Yeah, we inherited, we inherited that.
What's that?
Yeah, we inherited that.
I don't know if you discussed that with the county, like during, I'm worried, I'm more concerned about during construction, you got trucks slowing down, everybody's doing seventy miles an hour around that turn, and you guys are going to be coming in with slower vehicles or-
Well, the parking lot's empty at that point when they come in, and it's going to be empty.
It, it's like, it's coming into your, coming off the county-
I understand, yes.
So, it's really the, you know, the, the risk or risk of that, number one. Number two is then the just construction activities, if you're storing equipment, construction equipment on site, that, you know, is there a plan of, do you have a construction plan laid out, staging areas?
With my GC, yes, we do.
Staging areas, et cetera.
Yes.
So, I'm just more concerned about the impact to the surrounding neighbors.
Our brides are very concerned also, and we definitely, that's definitely number one priority.
That's your customer, I guess.
Yes, no, I understand.
It's a lot, I guess.
No, we do have a plan of where the staging areas and so forth, and areas that are protected behind and below, you know, below the area.
Finished, man?
Yeah.
Okay.
Before somebody else brings it up, I'm going to bring it up, because I've been up there, and I have heard you, they have music going out the back. I don't know if anybody in the back has been complaining about the noise, but have you had any complaints about the noise fighting across the lake, because the water carries sounds, and you've had the music playing out in the back?
I've had people call me up, and they have my number, and I just fixed the problem with them directly.
Okay.
Like one neighbor to the side and two neighbors in the back.
Okay, now, you're aware that we, you were sitting here when we were talking about Verona, so do you can have a handheld gadget to keep the decibels down?
We have that, yes, we do.
You do?
Yes, we do.
Okay, do you keep it within the normal range?
Yes, we do.
Okay, until, we'll see if anybody complains about it then.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Does any other board members have a, a question for?
All right, if you'd just wait a second, tell anybody else to answer, maybe you, you'll have to answer some questions, okay?
Sure, I'll leave it.
Would you do me a favor and just move the mic over to the, to the, thank, thank you. Anybody in the audience wishes to be heard in this matter? Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth in respect to this matter?
Thank you.
Okay, give your name and address and spell your last name to the secretary, please.
Maureen, M.A.U.R.E.E.N.R.S.S. I live at four six seven Glen Road, I own the property at four seventy-one Glen Road.
Can you speak into the microphone, please, even I can't hear you.
Can you? I live at four six seven Glen Road, and I own the property at four seventy-one Glen Road.
Okay.
Four seventy-one Glen Road is directly down from the dam. I, I would still have concerns about cars parking there after I saw what happened in the flood of two thousand, so it's straight shot right to that, it's a small rental house I have on my property. So, I've, I've heard your testimony that everything's fine about it, but I'm still concerned. The other thing I want to ask is, now that you're putting these covered areas outside, will there be music and outside activities extending more than just the wedding ceremony?
That's yours, Perry.
No. Should I talk to my-
You can move over, you can either sit down and, the mic there, or, you can pick it up. No, I'm sorry, you can't go too far with it, okay?
No, so the, just like Jillian said, the, the roof over the deck is really for the ceremony.
Okay.
So, we're not running back and forth, and it's a covered area. Our cocktail hour is pretty much inside, most of it's inside. After the ceremony is over, which is a lower level, they generally go upstairs, because there's no bathrooms there, there's no elevator, so we, we get the people with the, you know, all the people we get with the electric cars, but mainly the cocktail hour is inside. It's really not that much outside. Upper, the upper area is really for the woven part, and the doors are pretty much closed, and, and that, you know, functions basically upstairs.
You had mentioned, you know, the lighting wasn't changed. It's like New York City, your lights are on twenty-four seven down that road, it is-
Well, it was dark, I mean, it was for the girls parking down there, because there's bears and so, there was-
Yeah, but not at two o'clock, three o'clock, four o'clock, five o'clock, six o'clock in the morning.
I'll have the electrician put a timer up.
That'd be fantastic.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, no problem.
All right, that's my concerns, okay.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to be heard?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth in respect to this matter?
I do.
Give your name and address to the secretary, please, and spell your last name.
Paul Gianniglou, G.I.A.N.N.O.G.L.O.U., thirty-four Idyll Heights.
And what can we do to help you, sir?
I just have three quick questions. Does Rock Island still request a variance to operate as a restaurant? I know that was-
I know that was on a previous application.
I believe back in 2016, when the board granted the approval, there was, there was the right to maintain it for à la carte, but I believe Perry had testified that that would be only on a rare occasion and probably never. So the answer is, is that presuming the board grants the approval, it would still have that as an alternative, but it's not part of the business model. Is that fair to say, Perry?
That's correct.
And this application doesn't request a change in the variance for that?
No.
Because I know that...
Okay.
And so as we all know, two years ago, when they had the outdoor weddings, I think we can all agree it was a disaster for all parties. Since then, the parties have been inside, and except for the occasional mistake when the doors left open, the neighborhood's very quiet, the weddings are very controlled, and we do appreciate your efforts to keep it inside. My concern, I share with Ms. Ross, is that covering the deck area, the party would sort of creep outside. So could you confirm or assure us that the parties will not be creeping outside in compliance with the ordinances?
Like I said, the main concern is for rain and for the ceremonies moving back and forth. Right now, the people occasionally go outside during a reception, and they don't really, they utilize the side door. That's the only door that we usually let them use, and they'll go out there and they make smoke or things like that, but it's not gonna really change, you know, the way we run the function, and we're not looking to bring people out there and have, you know, party out there.
Okay, so I'm just gonna note that, or as you know, everything's great until the doors open, and normally they're not open, but if they get, if they open, you know, I usually give you a call and it's, and it's just fine, but...
Okay.
My concern is that, you know, it'll be sort of...
No, I, I, there's concerns, and like I says, anybody could call me up and I'll do whatever I could to be a good neighbor, and I, hopefully, my past proved that.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
And then last question with the storage expansion, it's sort of, it potentially disrupts the view. Would you commit to planting evergreen trees or something, just to sort of...
We already did start planting some trees, and I definitely will. I'll make sure we're not into the site triangle. We planted a couple already. I planted, actually, a dozen last year between the lake and the parking lot, and we did put some up near the road, but not in the site triangle. So we can put additional ones, because actually, the building will kind of block more of the road also.
Yeah.
So no, I definitely agree, whatever you guys want me to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your help, sir. Anybody else?
Well, based on that, would, the question would be, would you restrict the use only for ceremonies? And not having the wedding creep out or other use outside of the ceremony?
You ask him then?
I'm out.
You can ask him.
Then, yeah, that was directed at you.
Well, I want to change what it's used for now, is people do go outside, they talk, and they come back inside.
All right, so...
We're not looking to extend...
Then this is just more, more to the gentleman's concern. It's not just, I understand a convenience for the ceremonies and, and your guests and the bride, but it's, you know, let's get it on the record then, it's being expanded the use for, but that space is not just for ceremonies.
Understood. Perry, right now, the deck is there and people go out and they, whatever they do, they get away from the noise inside, or they chit-chat, or they smoke or whatever, so that's gonna continue.
Correct.
So is it fair to say that, so everybody's clear, what the deck is used for today would be continued, except there'll be a roof over it rather than, and you'd likewise have the wedding ceremonies up there?
Yeah, that's correct.
I think if I'm, unless I'm mistaken, I think the ordinances already require the doors to be closed during the music, so I just wanna, I mean, I know that's something to change for this, but I just want to make sure we're on the same page, that we're not gonna have the wedding bleed out and people coming in and out and the doors being open, which so far Perry's good about, but I just don't want this to change.
You raised a question, I just want to get it out to the public that, you know, based on testimony and everything you're hearing, that it possibly can expand it to guests using it during the duration of the event.
Any other requirements that were set up in the past continue, by the way?
I'm gonna just...
Go ahead, jump in.
Because I had to go through the whole file, take you off the hook. How many guests are allowed on site at any time?
140, 144, I believe.
Do you have advertisements for 200?
I always advertise for extra people, yes. But since, well, always, because if I advertise, just like I said in 2016, if I advertise 144, I'll barely get 100 people. So we do advertise for more people, but the weddings, we have another facility that holds a lot more people, 350 people, and the way the building is set up, the ceiling of the built, of the roof in our ballroom is low, it's, you know, it's not conducive to doing large weddings. And we have another facility that holds 350 people, it's a half-hour away, and most, almost all, all bigger weddings go over there.
Diana, did you pick that up on the... Okay, thank you.
And you're bussing people into the site, though?
Yes, we are.
If I happen to stay at a hotel down in Parsippany or Olive or...
Yeah, they do that on their own, they, they make arrangements for hotels.
So I'm really confused, I just, my daughter just had a wedding at a facility that holds 400, and we were told we could have up to 400, and that was it, but that was all permitted. And you're saying that the board is only allowing 144, I think, right, Rich?
Right, 144.
And yet, you're advertising for 200. I don't get that.
Well, like I said before...
I heard what you said.
Okay.
I don't get it. The board's gotta decide what to do with it, but the board puts limits on how many buses can be kept on a piece of property.
Well, you could put a condition of no occupancy, advertise more than 144.
Works.
I, that's where I'm going, but I'm not a board member.
I know. Anyway, we had it written down here. Okay, we've solved that problem.
I have a question for the architect.
Okay.
One question for the architect. With the covering on the balcony all around and the secondary stair there for a secondary means of egress, is it gonna require additional outside lighting, either under the canopy, under the roof, and/or outside the stairwell that doesn't exist now?
There will be lighting underneath the porches, underneath the roof line, basically aiming down towards the deck of the porch, along the staircase. We're gonna do dual post lighting down onto the steps, just to basically make it a safe egress means.
Any additional site lighting there?
And as far as the regular site lighting goes, we were not making any changes to that. So it's all on the building itself.
The lumens you're gonna use are in accordance with the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. All right, if you need any information, call Mr. Simmons, okay? Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else have a question? Okay. If nobody, none of the other board members have a question, I'll accept a resolution, motion for a resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, have our board attorney prepare a resolution approving application 7-21, block 29001, lot 95, 485 Glen Road for use variance, site plan approval for expansion, and improvements to the facility and site. With a front yard variance of 5.9 feet and pervious coverage variance of 24.73% with the conditions, the following conditions. No parking of vehicles on Glen Road. Cannot advertise for occupancy of more than 144. And with the current recording, recorded easement, applicant will continue to maintain that easement. Also, dam inspections be performed in accordance with the NJDEP. Also, the applicant accept and adhere to our board engineer, Mrs. Simmons, report, and also provide the ads bill plans. Was there any other conditions?
Testimony and plan submitted.
Oh, yes, forget that. According to all plans and testimonies submitted.
Is there a second?
Chairman, I would just make one point of clarity. There was a request for relief from two conditions from the 2016 resolution, so if we could just drop that, as was noticed and as was included in this mission. That was the easement and then the permit.
Can we do that?
They testified to it, I don't think you had any problem with those at all, because there are engineering issues right there.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, Steve.
We should make that as a special condition?
Yeah, they called it out in his report and stuff, so...
Okay.
Since they asked for the release, I guess we should talk in public.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Diana, would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
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 Thank you for staying late, thank you for...
I want to appreciate, I thank the board for staying late, we don't normally do this. You cleared it up.
We got everything done, I was at the agenda.
Yes, yeah.
We're scheduled, um, the balance of the year, we...
Okay.
One in December, Mike.
December, right?
One in December, and it's the, we're go... Diana, we only have that one on, right? No, we only have the one, one case on, right? Another one? Okay, we have one big D variance for, we have one great big D variance and one small other area, that's it.
So we'll meet one more time, that's pretty much.
That's it, yeah, because I won't, I won't bring anybody in during the holiday season, and I won't gonna come in on Christmas or in New Year's, okay? No, Thanksgiving and New Year's.
Got it.
Okay? And that's a waste of time. One more meeting.
Holiday party at your house.
Yeah. And the only thing, okay, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say that...
I wanted to give you the chance.
Oh. I forgot what else to say.